The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present. Present.
Alderman Hubbard.
Present.
Alderman Iggracia. Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Grass.
Here.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman Howard.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cole.
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Iggracia.
Present.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Rhodey.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Rhodey is present, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, I got you. Alderman Mohammed.
Present.
Twenty-sixth, present.
Before I'm being present, we will begin the day with prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We will dispense with line item three. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests, Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my special guest today Ninth Ward resident Inez Bordeaux with Close the Workhouse. I would also like to recognize Kayla Reed, Mike Milton, Blake Strode, Jay Shepard, and all the other members of the Close the Workhouse campaign. After them, my special guests, and offer them a big congratulations as we hear Board Bill 92 today. So, thank you.
All right, let's welcome them to the board meeting. Any further introductions, Alderman from the twenty-third?
Yes, as always, Mr. President, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer. And also today, I'd like to welcome John Kurtzborn and Elliot Davis as my special guests today.
Well, welcome, though. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Any further introductions?
I'd like to welcome Dave Sweeney.
All right, Dave Sweeney, welcome. Any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, today's July tenth. On this day in ten forty in the city of Coventry, the first peaceful protest was recorded as Lady Goddaver rode naked through the streets. Those days are gone. Nineteen sixty-five, Wilson Pickett wrote in the midnight hour. But more importantly, this is pina colada day. So, if you like pina coladas and getting caught in the rain, go listen to that stupid song and leave me alone. Thank you very much.
All right, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, Wednesday, July eighth, twenty twenty.
Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the minutes dated July eighth, twenty twenty.
I obtain a second on this motion, second about Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt minutes, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
We'll dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our formal accounts? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our formal accounts?
Mr. President?
Yes, Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize.
I'd like to remove Board Bill number twenty.
All right, Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill number twenty at the end of the regular perfection calendar? Or you want to put it on the, at the end of the regular perfection calendar? We'll dispense with line items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill ninety-five, sponsored by Alderman Rice, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Todd, Alderman Orion, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Iggracia, Alderman Martin, Alderman Green, and Alderman Gunther. Ordinance set, an ordinance setting for the regulations for the use of surveillance technology by the city of St. Louis requiring surveillance technology uses, usage rules, regulation, specific technologies and guidelines be established and approved by the Board of Aldermen before any such surveillance technology may be used and plans may be put in practice and contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-six, sponsored by Alderman Iggracia and Alderman Rice. An ordinance established in a city commission to collect community input, gather information, conduct community outreach, study and create a new war boundary map of the city of St. Louis. That is extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill ninety-five. That is extent of reference to committee. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Orion, an ordinance for regulation and control of the air pollution within the city of St. Louis, repealing ordinance number six-eight-one-three-seven. Approved October thirty-first, two thousand and eight. Ordinance seven-zero-six-zero-seven, approved July nineteenth, twenty nineteen. And ordinance seven-one-one-four-six, approved May seventh, twenty twenty. Pertaining to the regulation and control of air pollution and enacted in lieu thereof, a new ordinance for the purposes of clarity pertaining to the same subject matter and containing the severability clause, penalty clause, and an emergency clause. That is extent of second readings.
We'll dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderman Davis, an ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Folsom Avenue and Clem Street, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Folsom Avenue at Clem Street and regulating all traffic traveling northbound on Clem Street at Folsom Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty-nine, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderman Davis, an ordinance establishing a stop site at the intersection of McCree Avenue and Clem Street, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Clem Street and McCree Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance closing the St. Louis City's O'Fallon Park to the public and prohibiting all uses of O'Fallon Park by the public for the period beginning with effective date, effective date of this ordinance and ending January the first, twenty twenty-one. Board Bill eighty-four, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance renewing the previous determinations made by ordinance number six-six-eight-four-seven and ordinance number six-six-nine-eight-five and as renewed by ordinance number six-eight-seven-five-four and ordinance number seven-zero-one-one-nine for the redevelopment area, finding that the redevelopment of such area is necessary and in the public interest under Charter three-five-three, of the revised statutes of Missouri, twenty sixteen, as amended, and under Chapter one-one-zero-six of the revised code of the city of St. Louis, Missouri, and is in the interest of the peace, public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the people of the city of St. Louis and renewing the certificate of public convenience and necessity granted by the city of St. Louis to Cortex West Redevelopment Corporation to exercise the power of eminent domain within the redevelopment area. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the ninth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had my hand up to ask that we remove Board Bill eighty-seven from the perfection consent.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill eighty-seven at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
Mr. Chairman, Board Bill twenty was to be placed at the end of the perfection consent calendar.
You want to place it on the consent calendar? Or I thought you wanted it originally on the regular perfection calendar? Do you want it on the consent?
I thought that's what we indicated, but I may have been wrong.
Okay, that's all right. Madam Clerk, please read Board Bill twenty into the perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill twenty, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance enacting a curfew for Chambers Park, Jet Bank Park, Norman Say Park, Terry Park, and Tiffany Park prohibiting individuals from idling, wandering, strolling, playing or otherwise being in or upon the premises of said parks and the public areas immediately adjacent to said parks daily throughout the year between the hours of seven PM and seven AM and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent count.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of a perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from the tenth, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill ninety-two, as amended, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Calder, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Davis, Alderman Orion, and Alderman Boyd. An ordinance in accordance with Article twenty-five, section one of the St. Louis City Charter, recommended by the Board of Estemen and Apportement, amending the duties of the Division of Corrections and the Department of Health and Hospitals, directing the Commissioner of Corrections to begin the process of closing the St. Louis City Medium Security Institute, also known as the Workhouse, directing the Budget Director to analyze the net cost savings to the General Fund if MSI is no longer operated as a detainee facility and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill ninety-two as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the perfection of Board Bill ninety-two as amended.
Move by Alderman from twenty-first. Second by Alderman from the twenty-third, thirteenth, and what's another one I missed? Please proceed, Alderman from twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. This board bill creates a comprehensive and complete plan in totality to close the medium security institution and reinvest that money where it should go in neighborhood projects and also put it back into our general fund. The difference with this board bill and previous board bills is this is a complete plan that we have not seen before. And it gives a complete guideline and process in which we should close the Workhouse with input from the Health Commissioner or Health Director. Of course, our Correctionalist Commissioner as well in the Board of Aldermen. So with that, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
Okay, any further, Alderman from the ninth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise in support of Board Bill ninety-two. And thank you for putting forth the bill and working with the Close the Workhouse campaign. Also, just wanted one more time to congratulate the Close the Workhouse campaign on almost three years of putting this before the public and working with a lot of board members to come up with a plan that in twenty twenty, we can finally close the Workhouse. So with that, I would like to ask that my name be added to Board Bill ninety-two as amended.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
Mr. President, I, I'm praising and supportive of this bill. I would like my name added as a co-sponsor as well. Yeah, I applaud the efforts of Close the Workhouse and, you know, all of the organizations that have been partnering together for many years. You know, like my colleague from the Ninth Ward, you know, put out there for several years now trying to get this done. I do, just as a point of order, who's handling the muting and administration of the call? Because I, I continue to get muted when I unmute, which like, I did it, I unmuted myself to second the bill and then I just unmuted myself to speak, you know, when you called and I automatically get muted. So who's doing that?
Some, some of that is a time, time issue. Like, right now, you hear this echo coming from us. But when we're taking, I don't know where that's coming from. But when, when we're taking a, a general vote, all of the mics are on. Sometimes, people.
But I specifically unmuted my mic.
Alderman, we're going to move forward with the bill, the discussion that's in front of us. We can talk about muting on muted mics after meeting. Alderman from the twenty-second?
So, I'm, I'm, okay. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to offer an amendment to Board Bill ninety-two as amended. The amendment is in the Google Drive, it's a very simple amendment. What it basically does, it eliminates Section Eight, which references the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. As some people may know, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is kind of a quasi-government entity that's set up of multiple intergovernment entities, like the state of Missouri, the federal government, the city, probation and parole, just several different entities. And they all have membership. And so I've gotten correspondence that some of them are kind of concerned about being actually placed in the board bill, although they do want to cooperate in any way whatsoever to provide data. And so they're just requesting to be removed and I want to oblige them on that effort. It has no real negative impact on the board bill as a whole because the only thing they're asking to be, asked to do is provide data.
Okay.
And I'd like to move for adopt amendment number one to Board Bill ninety-two as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second and seconded by Alderman from the eighth.
I have, I have a question.
And, hold on, any further discussion on the amendment that's before us? I'm just first go through the hands that are up. If your discussion is about the amendment or the bill as a whole. If it's about the amendment, take your turn now, otherwise, I'll hold for the next one. So Alderman, Alderman from the eighth, her hand was up.
I'm the full body of the bill, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Alderman from the fifteenth, your hand was up.
Mine's on the full body of the bill, too.
Okay. Alderman from the twenty-eighth, your hand is up.
Nothing on the amendment, Mr. President.
Alderman from the twenty-third, your hand is up.
Yeah, I'm concerned that any amendment, I'm fine with the amendment, but any amendment to the bill would mean that it can't even be engrossed for three days, which means that this bill won't be taken up until sometime in October.
Well, it could, it can still, it can still be engrossed, but we cannot take final action on it. We can't third read and final pass it until next Tuesday. So we have a meeting next Tuesday and that will be three days. So we would still be able to pass it next Tuesday if we amend it today.
I'm, I'm fine with it, it's just that I, when I read Rule sixty-five, and that's the same one I keep going back to, that, and, and.
They have, they.
And this is my only concern, I'm fine with it, I just.
Yeah, the charter, the charter gives the Rules and Engrossments Committee three days or up to the next scheduled meeting, right? So.
I think so. And then see, I don't want to shake her head, no, but I think. It says.
I'm talking about the charter itself, that's what the charter says, that's what the charter.
Talking about all rules. I just, I just want to be, make sure that we're not doing something that's going to delay this.
Yeah, yes. Let's, let's, let's defer to the, to the chairman of Rules and Engrossments because it's also going to require Rules and Engrossments to call a meeting and have it on the agenda. So we need to see what they, they would plan to do with it. And that would impact it, so.
That if we change what's going to happen.
Yeah, I, I agree. Alderman from the twenty-seventh, are you speaking on the amendment or the bill?
I just have a question, Ken, and, and somebody might already asked it or gave the answer. We can, I thought we were in the middle of voting on the bill. So should the amendment been presented first and then vote on the bill?
No, we have to first have a motion to bring the bill in front of us. And that's what the original motion was, it was made by Alderman from the twenty-first, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third, and Alderman from the thirteenth, to get the bill in front of us. And now that it's in front of us, we can amend it. Alderman from the twenty-second, put in amendment number one in front of us. And you can amend an amendment, but you cannot amend an amendment to an amendment, right? So, 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 right now, we have the amendment in front of us to remove the section that, that states that CJCC would be required to provide any data to the Board of Aldermen that we request, right? Not to the Corrections Department, but to us, if we request additional data or data from them. That's what, that's what that section is.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And my office put that in there just so that in case, for whatever reason, the board itself, we would want additional information from them, we could get additional information from them if we wanted, you know, any additional data. Alderman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, it's a sponsor of the amendment, Alderman of the twenty-second would yield?
Alderman of the twenty-second, will you yield for questioning to the, to the Alderman of first?
Yes.
Alderman of first, please proceed.
Alderman, you said that there were some entities that did not want to be included in the regular board bill that's coming before us, is that correct?
There were members of the entity that does not want to be, that has basically agreed they should not be part of the board bill.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I heard every other word that you were saying. Can you repeat yourself, please?
There are members of the entity that don't want, as a whole, they basically don't want to be part of the board bill. However, they're not resisting being part of the process.
And who are those members?
We have the executive director, who is Debbie Allen, we have Judge Mueller, we have someone.
I'm sorry, my question was, who doesn't want to be included?
I don't know, Alderman, I just got a correspondence that said they, as a whole, they do not want to be part of it.
So, the whole, the whole committee is being taken out of, not just, let's just use the sheriff's office or something. Is the whole process, the whole committee that's being taken out of this bill, is that what's happening?
The whole entity, the CJCC entity itself.
And can you tell me why they don't want to be a part of it, or did they give you a reason why?
I didn't go into a lot of detail with them, but, you know, to me, it was just a real benign issue and I just said, okay, if that's how you feel, that's fine with me. I talked to the president, he didn't have an issue with it, so here we are.
And so, the correspondence that you got, did it come from the entity as a whole or separate members of that entity?
It was not a formal letter from the entity as a whole, like on station or anything like that. Were you going with this, Alderman?
I'm going with trying to get further information so I can clarify how my vote will be. That's where I'm going with it, I'm trying to get information. So you, you made a general statement, I want some more specifics.
I'm not yielding for any more questions.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Mr. President, I don't have any further questions. I don't know why, what was the concern? I was just trying to get further information, but I, I thank you very much, I have no further questions.
Alderman, Ald, let me see who it is. Alderman from the ninth, do you have any questions on the amendment number one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I was going to inquire of the Alderman twenty-second, but I guess he's not going to take questions. But I was just wondering.
You can still, you should still ask him if he would like to yield.
I would like to inquire from the Alderman from the twenty-second.
Alderman from the twenty-second, will you yield a question to Alderman from the ninth?
Yes.
Alderman from the ninth, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderman. My question was, just because looking at the amendment, CJCC is in there to provide data and provide support. So my question is, why would we not want CJCC in there to help with providing data as to numbers of people incarcerated, rates that we're being able to get people through our bail system and other information that CJCC would provide? It, it doesn't seem like there's anything in there that holds them directly to the bill other than providing us with information.
Well, I believe if you look through the whole bill, there's a forty-five day requirement to produce a report. And so what we don't want to do is to put undue burden on another entity that we don't have a hundred percent control of. It's not like we can direct different departments within city government, but we cannot direct probation and parole to give us information. We cannot direct other entities that's without, that's outside the purview of city government. Does that make a little sense?
Correct.
We certainly can't direct the judges to do anything.
Okay. But we were going to be looking for personal.
Alderman from the ninth, you have to, you have to repeat that.
CJCC, be the one that would.
Alderman from the ninth. Oh, that's all right. Repeat all of that again, because we, we lost it. You, you, you went, we couldn't, it, it didn't come through that time. Do it again. So start, start over with the last, entire last thing.
I'll make it shorter.
No, no, don't make it shorter. Don't make it shorter, go ahead, do, do your thing.
Is the CJC, who, CJCC, are they the ones that we would be getting data from? And would it not be helpful to be able to get the data from them through this bill?
Again, they're not going to resist giving data. The challenge is trying to direct another government body, if you will, to do something. They, they want to be participants, but they don't want to be part of this board bill. It may be, you know, and it possibly could be an overreach because we cannot direct the courts to do anything, we cannot direct the state of Missouri to do anything, but they are working together and it's collaborative as part of this quasi-government entity. And everybody has a right to protect their domain.
Okay, thank you, Alderman.
Alderman from the nineteenth, are you, are you wanting to speak on the amendment or the?
Oh, I was going to just speak on the amendment.
Okay.
Because all of the reports and information is generated by our directors of the facilities would have all information that we would ever need anyway. And the reports that are required to go for payment to the various entities, whether it's the state, a federal government, those. government, those we have availability to at any time we want. So, there's very little that would be different, oh, oh, wait a minute. There's very little that would be different from anything that they could possibly provide, because they're all intertwined. So I like the idea that they are being, they're being incorporated as far as being there for assistance when needed, but we, we have, we have all the data available to us at any time that we would need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment, any further discussion on the amendment? Before we move forward with the amendment, I do want to clear one thing up and ask some of the Alderman from the first, if they would be willing to or enabled to have a rules and engrossments meeting in time for Tuesday's meeting to take this up. Because that, because I think it's absolutely critical that we get this out of the board before we go down. Alderman of the first.
Any sponsor of anything that will not yield to my simple questions, I cannot speak for my committee, I speak to my committee as a whole. We already have a meeting set up this afternoon, so he, he makes this amendment at his own risk. If he cannot answer my questions, I cannot speak to when we're gonna, we're gonna set anything, because after all, we're just a secondary, non-essential committee. So we're gonna make sure we do everything right up to every, every instance of the rule. So I cannot speak for them, because when we set meetings, I talk to my entire committee. Thank you very much.
All right, so it could bear on our ability to actually move the bill out. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty second that we amend Board Bill ninety-two as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the board.
Alderman Tyus?
Pass.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Iglesias?
Aye.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin? Alderman Grass? Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Jeremy, aye.
Got it. Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Tyus?
Present.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
Twenty seven, I votes and one present.
By vote, you signed motion, Alderman from the twenty second, and adopted amendment number one. Now, what's before us is discussion of the bill. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to also rise in support of this bill. I want to thank everyone who has worked so incredibly hard over these last several years to get the, get this bill forward, get the workhouse closed, to the Close the Workhouse campaign, to the bail project, to Arch City Defenders, and every single person who knocked on doors, who came to rallies, who made phone calls, who texted and emailed all of us for flooding our inboxes. Thank you for all of that. And, Mr. President, I would like to add my name as a co-sponsor, if I could, please.
Thank you, Alderman. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add to Alderman from the eighth's name as a co-sponsor. Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would also like to give a big congratulations to all of the organizers around Close the Workhouse and the tremendous amount of work that has gone into this over the last couple of years. I'd also like to thank you, Mr. President, for copying and incorporating almost verbatim the plan that was put forth by Close the Workhouse in twenty eighteen, and was then modified in twenty twenty with updated data to ensure that the thing that we are codifying today is nearly exactly what Close the Workhouse has been advocating for as their plan to close the facility for the last three years. I think if not for the tremendous amount of work from Close the Workhouse, from the Bail Project, from Arch City Defenders, and from impacted populations within our city, I don't think we would be here today. So we owe them, I think, a lot of gratitude for the, the groundwork that they've done to change the narrative in our city, so that us as public policymakers would, would have the political will to move this forward. So I would also like to ask that my name be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the fifteenth. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, the Alderman, add Alderman from the fifteenth name as a co-sponsor. Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members.
I'm sorry you had problems with that hand.
Right, I was trying to find a range length. I've been going from full screen to short screen.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, and I especially thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership. I feel that we had a very hard decision to make. I'll stand by my comments on that. We are really fast-tracking this, and we're putting our commissioner in an awkward space, and I hope that we all utilize our leadership ability if by chance we don't meet these deadlines. I have confidence that my colleague from the twenty second said he's gonna go above and beyond to assure that we revisit things if we don't meet those deadlines, because it, it really puts us in an awkward space, but I do understand the importance of it. I guess today, I'm kind of taken back by the fact that we, we have successfully moved forward, but now there's this petty contest about whose idea it was or when it started, and it's like, that's not what's in the best interest of our city and our constituents. So I just hope that we can do the right thing, and as a city, as a board, work together so that we can make decisions on, in our best interest when it comes to offenders in our city, because we would not like to be sued if we have overcrowding problem and we have to shift offenders around. It just, there are some big issues to talk about, and I, I hope that we really lean on the experts, the people who are working in the field of criminal justice and criminal justice, who aren't just infatuated with closing a building, but doing what's in the best interest of the city as well as the offenders. I hope that we really lean on their expertise throughout this entire process, because they have the in-depth knowledge of how we move forward legally, how we move forward protecting our offenders and making sure they are not further victimized by simply closing a building and putting them in a very harsh environment. So I think that there is so much to consider, but I just hope that we can move forward and do what's in the best interest of the city and of those that are incarcerated, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to echo the gratitude and congratulatory remarks of my colleagues from the eighth and the fifteenth, and please add my name as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Clerk, please make note of that, add the Alderman's from the twenty eighth's name as a co-sponsor to board bill. Alderman from the twenty third.
No, I, I.
You were, your hand was up from before, all right.
Mine was more just on the amendment and, and concerns that we may have to schedule even another meeting next week.
Okay. Yep, we will, yeah, I'm committed to doing whatever we need to do to get this out in a timely fashion, so it does not linger over the summer. And I would hope that the rest of the members of board would accommodate that. So Alderman from the twenty seventh, you had your hand up earlier and it went down. I don't know if you are still wanting to speak.
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'm kind of still focusing on, I, I did say I do support closing the workhouse, but I also support that we need to be real careful and make sure that a plan is in place. And I keep hearing about a plan, but my question is, is it a committee, or how is this plan put together, or how do we know as a board what the steps are? And so that's what I'm just nervous about, because now at St. Louis, again, we're number one in something we shouldn't be, which is the murder rate. And so my question is, so how is, how is this plan going to be derived, and how are we gonna make sure that it's gonna win on both sides for people to be able to be prosecuted to the fullest of what they're doing in regards to terrorizing our community? But closing the workhouse, how is that gonna look? So that's my question. Is this some type of committee or something that's there, or how do we, how is that gonna happen?
Alderman from the, from the twenty seventh, if you would like, you can inquire of Alderman from the twenty first, or I don't know if that was just a general statement.
That's just a general statement. I just want to know, you know, what's going on, yeah.
All right, thank you.
If I can, Mr. President.
Alderman from the twenty first, you can hold that until they're closed. I think we're, I think it was just a general statement. Alderman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would also like to rise and thank the organizers and advocates, as we all know, led by Close the Workhouse, Action St. Louis, Arch City Defenders, and many, many more. I'd also like to thank my colleagues who have led on this issue. I haven't always been in favor of closing the workhouse, but it was the advocates and the organizers and many of our colleagues here who educated me. I listened to that work, and I'm glad that by virtue of the strong coalition that we have supporting this now, we have all come on board. I would like to encourage us as a body to enter into more conversations with the general public, with advocates, activists, and each other with open minds moving forward. I'm proud that despite not being on the same sides in the beginning, we are all here today. Thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership here. Thank you, Alderman from the twenty first, and others who have helped lead us, get us to where we are today.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman.
That's all I have. Please add me as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add the Alderman from the twentieth as a co-sponsor. All right, Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the eighteenth. There you go. You, you have to unmute yourself. There you go.
I would like to, first of all, thank the coalition who were the movement behind this to close the workhouse. You did a terrific job. I would also like to thank my colleagues for, uh, 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 happened to participate in closing the workhouse because of the cost, as well as the injustice of some of the people there, as well as in the Justice Center, that, where we are in some cases violating the Constitution in that they have excessive bail, which a person who is in poverty don't have any money, what is an excessive bail? So I would like to thank you for that, as well as speeded trial. So we do, so those two things, constitutional things, for those who were worried about what we're gonna do with prisoners, most of the people in the Justice Center probably should, shouldn't be in prison in that they are in poverty, but the other reason, they should have a speedy trial, and also they, they should be able to get out on their own reconnaissance, because they don't have any money. But the third thing is that the state, if they are convicted, they should be sent to the state prison right away, and that way we could have plenty, we would have plenty of room. So I thank us, thank you all so much for moving in the right direction. The other thing, I would like to have my name added as a co-sponsor to the bill.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the eighteenth. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add to Alderman from the eighteenth's name as a co-sponsor. And Alderman of the sixth, your hand was up, but it's down now, and I don't know if you, like aged out, or if you took it down. Alderman of the sixth.
No, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty fourth.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to kind of take a second here, because this is truly an amazing grassroots effort that I, I think that we need to be seeing more of in general around politics. This is something that I think the, the establishment, and when I say the establishment, I mean myself to everyone in this, in this meeting, was not, not necessarily in favor of when, when concerned citizens became activated to tell us, this needs to end, we need to shut down this, this particular building. And the coalition of people that came together on, on these issues, sometimes were strange bedfellows, sometimes wouldn't have gotten together on other issues, you, you, everything from, you know, unions, you know, SEIU was part of this, Action St. Louis, Arch City Defenders, Bail Project, Decarcerate St. Louis, the ACLU, CAPCAR, you know, DSA, the, the list goes on and on. There were so many organizations that became supportive over time of this, and it's a true testament to what can happen when the citizenry gets involved and doesn't, doesn't give up on emailing and calling and, you know, even confronting their elected officials and pushing to say, hey, you represent us, and this is what we want. And it took time, it took years, but I think this is a momentous occasion where we're finally at the culmination of years and years and years of efforts, and hours and hours and hours of meetings. And, you know, I know personally, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of emails, and I know that this issue was, was alive and well before I came down here. So I imagine that some of my colleagues who have been serving longer than I have have gotten hundreds and hundreds more emails and calls than I got on this issue. So I think we need to just take a, a, a moment to, to truly appreciate the gravity of the situation here. And I, I can't be more thrilled to see that this is a, a testament to the fact that this system does work, that a, a person can have a quote-unquote crazy idea and start lobbying their elected officials and pushing and pushing and pushing, and then when the, when, when the, the time is right for it, action can be taken. And I think that's a truly neat thing that we're doing here today, and I'm, I'm pleased to be a part of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, am I unmuted?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. So I was originally not on board about closing the workhouse, even though I have been working on the workhouse issue since nineteen eighty-nine. I first became acquainted with the workhouse, and as a young public defender, had to go there and saw the appalling conditions. And then when I came to the Board of Aldermen, we were under a federal mandate from Judge Cahill about the workhouse, and people think it was just about the numbers. So that's what people hear, oh. And people think it was just about the numbers. So that's what people hear, oh. And it was about the numbers. We actually put people out. We would pick fifty people up in the daytime and at night so that the, uh, community didn't know. We would put fifty or seventy-five people out. We actually were doing that in two thou-, um, in, uh, when did I come here? Ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three and on. We, we kept having to put people out. And so, um, I rose in ranks, um, as my tenure as the twenty-fourth Alderman, I actually became the Chair of Public Safety. And so one of my first actions that I did was to, uh, as the Chair of Public Safety, is I took the press and community into the workhouse and the conditions were horrible, um, just as Judge Cahill had also outlined. Our order wasn't just about numbers, it was also about the condition of the workhouse. Um, we, during my tenure as the Chair for two years of Public Safety, we built the, uh, criminal, uh, the center of, Justice Center across the street from City Hall. Um, and we had a lot of problems with it, uh, with people who didn't move. We didn't get all the land we wanted. Um, so the Justice Center is not a panacea, and the reason why is, and the Alderman from the twenty-third touched on it, is because it doesn't have, um, a place for people to work out or do those kind of things. So my concern was, I wanted the workhouse to be redone, not just closed, because unless we build someplace where there are humane conditions, it to be locked up for twenty hours, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three hours, that is not in the best interest of, uh, uh, prisoners to me. And so that was one of my concerns from not only as a lawyer that represented people there, but as a former Chair of Public Employees. And, uh, there were other concerns. Um, we're doing one part of the issue, but there are other parts of the issue. Um, I know that when I had, uh, clients that, uh, were in jail maybe for two years, they always got sent so far away. Their parents had a hard time being able to, um, um, meet with them or their families. So I always looked at the workhouse as a potential for something else, not just close it down. Um, if you go to Europe, they don't throw their buildings away. And so for me, if, uh, if we could have looked at a, uh, bigger picture, then we could bring people in that are maybe getting ready to end their sentence and maybe the workhouse could be a place where then now their parents could, uh, reach out to them. We have, um, some, um, halfway houses spread throughout the city. Maybe that could be a place instead of, in my case, we got Dismiss House right behind a girl's school and right next to, uh, Wool Center and the park. That's ridiculous to me. I just found out Dismiss House does not have a, uh, zoning permit to even be there, um, after all these years because there were so much insider things going on in zoning with the city of St. Louis. So my issue was not that I didn't agree with the process of temporarily closing the workhouse, but long-term, this is still not going to be the end to all in because we cannot leave prisoners locked up all day, uh, for a year. Um, so, um, I did come on board when I saw the mayor's mean-spirited, uh, budget, uh, that took the recreation money and the war capital. And I looked at that, we had, uh, under a hundred people and we were spending eight, uh, eight million dollars, which was down considerably. Um, and I know in my community, I got that many people live on my street and we would never spend eight million dollars on something positive in North St. Louis, but we will spend eight million dollars to lock people up. So my conscience could not say, uh, financially that that was a good idea anymore. But, um, there are going to be problems still. We are still going to have to look at, uh, building another facility. I don't think that we can get away with having, uh, uh, just one facility and, and unless we get rid of a lot of the people that locked up. Now, I know Build the Workhouse Coalition, one of the things they want is for some of the people not to be locked up, and they're not wrong. Um, I told the story a few weeks, uh, ago when we were dealing with the budget, that I had to go get one of my tenants that had never been in trouble, um, out of jail personally with my own money because they kept passing his bail, uh, hearing along. And he was in jail from January to Good Friday and never had a bail hearing. That is ridiculous. That is uncon- that is unconstitutional. It is wrong. And in fact, uh, the Missouri Supreme Court has chastised the St. Louis courts about what they, they're doing and told them to stop doing that. So, and so instead of setting high bonds, they just pass it along and don't have hearings. And so that's equally immoral and unethical and illegal to me. And that's our courts doing that, and they ought to be ashamed of themselves. So, um, um, I am going to support this bill, but, uh, we still are going to have to look at another picture. To those of you who think that we can only have one jail, unless we take our population way down, that is not going to work. Okay? Um, now, I know we can get rid of our federal prisoners because we can move them to the county. We don't have to have federal prisoners. And I think it is an embarrassment when, when the federal people say that our workhouse is not good enough for their prisoners, but we put our actual citizens. Um, and I think that part of that is, when I was a public defender, I used to always have to explain to people because people would say, well, how can you defend those guilty people? And I said, I, I'm not defending any guilty people. These people are all innocent. When you are in the workhouse with very few exceptions, you have not been found guilty of anything. That could be your brother, your, uh, I think they moved all the women, but it could be your cousin, your father, anybody that got picked up who has been accused. When I used to try cases, one of the first things I would ask in voir dire is, if you had to vote right now, what would you vote? And if the people couldn't say they would vote not guilty, because if you haven't put on any evidence, then people are not guilty. So, um, that's the problem is that many people assume because you've been arrested that you are guilty. That doesn't make you guilty. And there's a disconnect, um, when it comes to that because we know how many of our young black kids have gotten shot and killed and murdered, and they haven't have done anything. The police have been the judge, the jury and the executioner. So just because they're locked up, that does not mean that they are guilty. The other thing that's a misnomer and misinformation is that people think that, uh, when you say, close the workhouse, that we're gonna somehow empty all the people into the streets. That's not what's going to happen. What's going to happen is they're going to be transferred. And I, they, they, I, I liked the transition thing that we were talking about earlier when the budget was going on because I talked to the work, the work, post-workhouse people, and so I had told them no early on, so they kept trying to get me. And I, you know, lobbied for, let's do a transition. Let's take some of the money and then let's transition and let's give people a chance to work this out, um, and not take all the money. And they actually were, uh, open to that even. So I think that we're still going to have to transition, um, but, um, I know the conditions over there are horrible. When we took the, uh, tour and been, what, eighteen years ago now, uh, two thousand and two, uh, uh, people were urinating in buckets. It was just horrible. Doris Schirr had just come aboard. They gave her like a forty thousand dollar raise overnight, nothing improved. So, uh, we have done patchwork, uh, improvements over there, but I was always hoping we could close down like a wing, put our people there, uh, redo that wing, bring it up to the standards that we're supposed to apply for grants and stuff like that. And then we maybe could keep our federal prisoners and some other people there, um, and, and so I was looking for a different, um, um, outcome. And I still hope that we have a different outcome because I don't agree that prisoners should be locked up for that long time. I equally agree with the Close the Workhouse people that the bail system and the other things and locking people up is equally wrong. So, um, ultimately, uh, I did a balancing test when I said a few weeks ago that they got me. The balancing test is anytime we can, um, spend eight million dollars to lock people up, we can take money from war capital, we can take money from recreation, we take no money from Forest Park. We leave money, millions of dollars for stadiums, and, um, we got millions of dollars for the convention center. Our, um, values are warped. Um, and so I'm not going to worry about they're going to let people out. So I hope people can hear that. Close the workhouse does not equal let all the prisoners out. And if we have to, um, the county can accept the federal prisoners and we can put our prisoners there. But I do hope that, um, part of our long-term goal, even though people say we just want one facility, if that is not possible, and if we're going to have one facility, we got to figure out how we're going to let the people exercise and the things that we're going to do to make it a humane place to be. Because locked up twenty-three, twenty-two hours a day is not humane and is not correct. And so those are the things that you need to look at and, and, um, so, um, and, and agreeing with, uh, whoever said that we need to let the commissioners and people look at it, the people who run it. Um, I will say that a lot of the time when people run it, they don't want anything to change, so they may not be in agreement. So we do have some rights to say, we want this to change, but we do want to make sure that we don't have an unintended consequence. Um, I'll also say it is equally important that we do acknowledge that very many people have been working on that. I don't think it's petty at all, but the Alderman from the fifteenth says, hey, I was working on this and I introduced something. She, she has been working on it. There's a lot of people, Alderman from the twenty-third, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-fourth, made a long list of people that have been working on it. So my hat's off to all of you. I am supporting this legislation, but I am, as I said, I'm still concerned and in my same con- concerns that I had before when I was not, uh, on board about the, uh, close the workhouse, was that we don't create a situation where we just got people locked up. When you're locked up all day like that, it makes for people to, that have a lot of problems in the jails. Um, and so, um, I, I, I hope that we look at a big, long-term situation. I actually had called Congressman Clay and wrote to him. I called, uh, our Public Safety Director and he and I spoke about some suggestions I have. So, um, I think this is a, a, a short-term solution, and I do hope that, uh, the, all the different groups that have come together, that you are correcting, that we can get bail set reasonably and, and a bail should not take more than thirty days. That's ridiculous to be locked up for ninety days and never have a bail hearing and never get it set. And bail should be set or, and bonds should be set for what you can reasonably pay. And so, um, if you make, um...
Alderman, Alderman, we can't hear you. Hey, yeah, you're, um, you're not muted, but we still can't hear you. Want to, oh, you're done? You're done? Okay. Uh, Alderman from the nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I just wanted to give my, um, verbal support because I have, have not been out front saying anything. I've been inside working, inside the workhouse, working and, uh, learning more about how the system works. And so, um, it's always good to have parallel processes, but we also know that at some point those have to come together and then you have to have action. And that's what we have today, so this is exciting. And I think that everyone will be very, very happy to know and have the experience to work with the directors of our correctional systems. They are very experienced, they're very caring, and just the things that they've accomplished already is beyond what most people know or ever verbalize as truths. Uh, at MSI, uh, the director out there, they call him Uncle. He's so good to them. And he made sure that there were many changes made there, uh, even when we didn't have enough money in our budget, he found ways to make it happen. And he came in demanding to close down the older part of that building because it, it did not work. It didn't work at all. So if you have a chance, uh, all my colleagues, if you have a chance, just go out and see what's really there. Uh, the individual showers, then everything that's in there now. The fact that they have a gymnasium and extracurricular things to do, that's better than our public school system, some of those. So you have to really go see what is there. You have to also see that they have the opportunity to have yoga, to do meditation. Uh, they have their barber shop, they have art classes, they write their own plays, have music, they can get their GED. They have, uh, additional social workers that come in and work with them from our higher institutions. So, um, I'm looking forward to the improvement and the change because there's a lot of opportunity. And I agree, it's going to require more than one facility because you cannot lock people. You just said that was inhumane, but yet it's not inhumane to have people in a cell for twenty-three hours a day. Uh, so we're going to have to do all of this differently, and we need some low-level, uh, types of correction to happen so that people don't lose their jobs because of child support or traffic tickets or whatever. So there's a lot of work to be done, but we do have experts in the field. We do have the, uh, opportunity to get knowledge, uh, from around the country. There's a lot of improvements been done in other cities, and so this is a good day. And I want everybody to take credit for this good day and to make sure that how you got to this point today, you continue to be in that same place. That means taking time to listen to each other, work on plans and execute those plans for the betterment of our citizens. And again, I just want to thank everybody, and hopefully as we move forward and get this working this summer, we don't need to waste one day. We need to get this moving as soon as possible. I mean, all of us should be working towards that goal. And again, thank you to everyone who has been a participant in getting us to this point today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, again, I'm, uh, with a lot of trepidation, will be voting for this bill today uh, because process is everything to me, and I'm just kind of curious. I'm going to ask if the, my colleague from the twenty-first would yield.
Alderman from the twenty-first will yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty-second.
Sure.
Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Alderman, because process is very important to me, I'm just kind of curious is who's going to own this? Um, will there be reports back to the, uh, Board of Alderman Public Safety Committee as to, um, where we are in the process? Or we just handing this over? Kind of explain a little bit about the process if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Alderman. So this is a long-term, uh, plan. This is not, anything's going to happen overnight or anything quickly, right? So it directs the, uh, Health, the Health Commissioner and the Corrections Commission to look at a plan to close the workhouse, uh, or the medium-security institution. And it will redesignate that funding to re-entry programs and other things that our city needs, uh, uh, under the, un- under, under the supervision of the Budget Division, right? So it does not let out, like this, this board bill does not say, we're going to release, you know, ninety-nine or a hundred inmates in the workhouse. Uh, no, no one has actually been released under this particular board bill. And even after the passage of this board bill, we still have to pass a companion board bill, uh, about the participatory budgeting of the revenue that's currently sent to the workhouse. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a long-term plan, right? And that's the difference in this particular legislation and previous legislation that was sponsored. Uh, uh, and also the, the Public Safety Committee is going to be right step and step, you know, uh, as the Alderman from the, uh, nineteenth ward said, uh, at any time, the Board of Aldermen can request information and request data. Uh, but the, uh, the, but also with that, for another layer, the Corrections Commissioner, Mr. Dale Glass, or whoever they may be at that time, whoever it may be, uh, or currently Mr. Glass, he will report back to the Board of E and A, uh, with its findings and with its data.
Um, so this all begins, um, basically when the mayor signs the bill, the clock starts. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I was going to ask if you wouldn't mind us having a thirty-day update as a Public Safety Committee, but we're going to be out of session. So, um, August, September, so two months, so the forty-five days would have expired by the time we come back into session. So I, I can wait till then. Uh, so I would hope to have, um, a, a hearing on where we are in the process the first day we come back out of session, um, just to get an update. Because I think it's real important that we monitor this process. It's a fair process. And as the Alderman from the first ward said, you know, we need to protect everybody at the end of the day. So I just want to make sure we're doing it in a very smart way, we've been very thoughtful, and that everybody wins at the end of the day. So thank you.
Abs- absolutely, uh, absolutely. And also, uh, uh, our Commissioner Dale Glass has already started working on, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Our Commissioner Dale Glass has already started working on a plan, and he has testified in committee before that he is ready and anxious to get this plan moving and, and to present it to E and A and the Board of Aldermen and this Public Safety Committee. Uh, and, and, and you serve on public safety, and I'm sure you recall that in previous committee hearings, Commissioner Glass will say, uh, he wants the workhouse closed. The, the only thing that he disputes, which is, uh, credible, is the inhumane treatment of, of, of inmates or that the facility is just, you know, crumbling down or falling down in front of them. So he has testified he wants the workhouse closed. He, he wants to have a, 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 a quality, uh, livable jail for people that are there. Uh, and he has testified that, and again, he has already started working on a plan.
Again, thank you, uh, Alderman from the twenty-first. No further.
Thank you. Thank you.
All, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yeah, I, I just want to agree with the Alderman.
Yeah, I I just want to agree with the Alderman from the first and the nineteenth that we're not letting people out, we're putting them in a worse place. Having gone over to the facility with Alderman Mohammed, you know, in actually getting the opportunity to play basketball uh with with the ladies actually over there and talking to the people there, they're not that thrilled about going over to a place where they're locked up. I'm gonna vote for this, but I'm I just do want a statement that once this is all in place, I think all the people are gonna be saying, oh, well, what did we do? Because we're not, we're not taking anybody out. We're taking them out of a place that is not that horrible, and we're gonna put them in a place that's much worse. Now, we don't control the judges, we don't control the bail, we don't, you know. There's nobody that I know of, and if if we want to do something that a a a a true ordinance, maybe we should eliminate any jail time for any city violation that we can control. We can take that away, we can have a fine and no jail time. But we don't control the state. And even though we've tried, Jeff City will just come back around and beat us up, and that's what'll happen. But I I do want to make the statement because we're taking people out of, and I'm gonna vote for this, but I do want that statement because when this turns to uh people saying, well, why did we do this? Um, you know, I honestly believe that we're not taking people out of jail. So for all the people that feel we're just gonna let release all the criminals, or or maybe not even criminals, maybe the word should be accused criminals, we're gonna take them out of a facility where they have a full gym, they have classes, they actually cook in a kitchen. A facility that I've walked through that, and I've talked to the people in there, people that were in line to see the dentist, people that were in line to see a doctor. I mean, that place, other than the part that I would not want to be confined anywhere, uh we're gonna take them out of there and we're gonna move them over to a place that does not have a full gym, that they're locked up a larger amount of time, they're gonna be in with even more criminals that, you know, are, I shouldn't say criminals, because again, I I agree, they're not convicted of anything, although some of them are there, have been convicted at other times, but I just want to go on record, I agree with the Alderman from the first and the nineteenth and and the Alderman from the twenty-second, we are not freeing anybody. We're just taking them from one facility, putting them into a worse facility, we're gonna take federal prisoners, and we're gonna move them out to Potosia places so their family can't see them. And, you know, we're we're taking, you know, we're gonna satisfy the close-the-workhouse group and say, gee, okay, now politically, we did what you want us to do. And uh at the end of this, all of us are gonna have to own this. But we are taking people from a bad situation and putting them into a much, much worse position. And we cannot force the judges to do any trials any speedier. We can't, I mean, we have no jurisdiction over the twenty-second judicial system. We only can control what we do in the city. So that's all I want to say. I just, you know, if you guys want to do something that we take away jail time, I don't know that anybody's going to jail for not cutting their grass. Um, you know, possibly, I don't even know if they're going to jail for not paying parking tickets. I think they just boot their car and take it. We can control anything that goes on in the city court system. We cannot control what goes on in twenty-second judicial. So they're gonna continue to sentence people, they're gonna continue to give them whatever bail they feel like. We don't control that. But instead of being in a facility where they can kind of be free to move around throughout the day, uh ag- again, yoga classes, GED classes, get, when I was there with Alderman Mohammed, and he could verify they were in line for the dentist, uh some of them were in line for doctor treatments for, um, you know. So when we move them, we're gonna take federal prisoners, put them far away from their family. We're gonna take prisoners, there are people that are being held, and we're gonna move them into a much worse facility. And I just want to be, go on record, I'm gonna vote for this, you know, but mark my words, when this is all said and done and we move all these people around, we're gonna be getting more phone calls and complaints than you've ever seen about how unjust this is. And we won't be able to do a thing about it. We will not be able to tell the judges, do speedier trials. We're not gonna be able to do a thing about it. We're gonna put these people in a worse position. We're taking them out of our hands and putting them into a worse place. I just want to go on record as saying that. I'm gonna vote for this. But when it all, we all start getting calls about how horrible we just treated everybody, and we start talking about how bad the conditions are in the Justice Center, remember, we're the ones that are voting to move these people into a much worse position. And that, that's just my my comment. And uh now, I wish we could do more, but you know, that's my comment. I'm gonna vote for this. Uh, you know, and 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 I'm on rules and engrossment, I'll vote to get it out of there too, but I just want my statement out there. This way, when things go real south on us, I can at least say we did this because it was the political thing to do, possibly not the right thing in my heart. Thank you.
Alderman from the first.
Okay, I'm sorry I was cut off before. Um I want to just tag on what the Alderman from the twenty-third said, because he made me remember, because I was here when we were building the Justice Center. Um so he made me remember some things. What, um and one of the reasons that we were also building the Justice Centers, we had a lot of downtime when I was an attorney with the Public Defender's Office, because when we would have to bring prisoners in, they would come from different places. And so if they got uh delayed, um then we would be sitting around the court, the judges, the tur- the circuit attorneys and the public defenders, the private attorneys, we'd just sit for hours. So also, the the Justice Center, why it doesn't have all of this stuff, it was built more as a holding place. It was not supposed to be long-term. It, you know, you forget things sometimes. But now I I recall that it was a place where we could then bring the prisoners in early if you had a trial, we could bring them in, and we could use that. We are always, as I was saying before, we're gonna always need another facility. And if you ever talk to the prisoners, the Alderman from the twenty-third is not wrong. Because when we would bring the prisoners in from other places, they would be glad to be close to their families, but they didn't even like being at the workhouse because they had even other privileges at in prison that they didn't have at the workhouse. If you move all of these people, when we move all of these people from the workhouse, there is going to be a backlash from them. Um, they will start to complain, there will be problems. I still say we need to uh improve the facility, but I really had hoped that we could do it in stages. Um Alderman from the nineteenth, I haven't been out there in a lo- a long while, said that they had done major improvement. So um that's good. Um and that they had closed part of it. That was my whole thought about what was a good way to do it. Um again, every building does not have to be closed down. I own many, several buildings that were um, and Alderman from the third knows that some of them are in his ward, that didn't have a roof, torn down, a wreck. We rehabbed them, people are living in them. That's what we've done with a lot of our buildings in St. Louis. Um I am a building hugger. I don't like throwing bricks away. So um uh looking at long-term solu- solution, why I like the workhouse, because some people said, well, we could build, we used to, we could build a jail downtown. We could take where the police station is and build a jail. You still don't have any land. That does not work. You need to have people be able to do some physical activity if they're gonna be locked up any long time. So the workhouse uh place for me still is a great place, even if we if we can't save it, tear it down, but to me, we build another facility. We don't keep anybody uh down here in the Justice Center for any long periods of time because that encourages bad behavior to me, because you don't get uh, um so I grew up with the idle hand, it's the work of the devil, and that the way you teach kids out of trouble was you had them at the recreation, and you know, you had things for them to do. Well, that same thing goes for prisoners. You know, if you've got things for them to do, and you're also training them, because uh locking people up is not just about punishing them. And so, or uh it's about also when they get out that they can come back into society. And uh uh people, uh Alderman from the twenty-third was looking for a term, they're accused, they're not uh criminals, they're the accused. If you and I get locked up and they put us in jail, we are accused. We are not guilty. So people forget that, um and 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 we just, I can't say that enough times. And I'm glad I went to the Public Defender's Office and practiced law because uh before that, I was one of the people that thought, oh, they got locked up, they must be guilty of something. So I was a bit too too profanatorial. And the Public Defender's Office really taught me how many people are falsely accused. My first three cases were not guilty in under hour, and every last one of them, um without a doubt, I can show you the case now, they did not do anything. So um we're going to start hearing from the prisoners. And so I think, I hope we do this in stages, that we're very careful how we do this. And I hope we start looking for some other monies to either fix up that part of the workhouse that's closed down, or maybe tear that part down and build something. It's gotta be something other than just move everybody to the Justice Center. That is not gonna work, and that was one of my hesitations. Um and as if the mayor had done a different bill, I still wouldn't be supporting this. I would take the hit, and I still wouldn't be supporting it because I think there are some problems with some of it. But ninety-five percent of the things that the people want, the ACLU and everybody, I agreed with. But just closing a facility and moving them all to be locked up was something I did not agree with. And um not uh having a long-term plan and knowing that we're still gonna have a second facility is something I don't agree with. And we're gonna be in trouble if we move everybody to this Justice Center. And then we're gonna hear, people are gonna start filing lawsuits for other reasons, because it may be a nicer facility, but it doesn't provide some of the things that we need to do uh for the prisoners. So I think this is just a step, hopefully, and that long-term, we're gonna be smart enough that we plan so that we don't find ourselves under a federal court order to do something else. Because we, while we're talking about taking this proactive step, uh the the federal courts don't necessarily have to agree with us. A prisoner can file a lawsuit, and we can be be in the middle of the lawsuit like we were before. So please don't take this as a long-term solution. And please don't, for people watching this, we are not releasing people out, even though most of them should be released because they're not guilty. But we're not just gonna pour criminals out onto your uh streets. That is a something that people use as a scare tactic. And all you gotta do to remember that is to think if that's your brother or your uh your uncle or your cousin that's been arrested and been sitting there for a long period of time, and you don't think of them as criminals, and most of you think that they're innocent, so know that everybody that's locked up mostly in the workhouse, most, many of them are innocent and till proven guilt, all of them are innocent until proven guilty, but many of them haven't committed any kind of crime. And again, I will say that uh thank all the people who have worked on this, uh but I would still want you to continue to work on this. I want you to hear what I'm saying about uh that we're gonna have complaints, because the people are gonna say, I I used to be able to do this at the workhouse and I can't. And we're gonna have those kind of complaints. And I want you to understand, it is inhumane to have people um uh locked up for twenty-something hours a day. And if we have to start transporting them back to the workhouse for them to get a workout, then um um transportation always becomes a uh a dicey deal because prisoners escape or do all kind of things. When I was a public defender, we had a part, a time when people just pushed the the sheriff down and ran out of court. Uh municipal courts used to be right next to the city hall on the other side. So um we do want to look at uh a a greater good for everybody. Um the accused, and even those who are found guilty, we do want to remember if they are found guilty and they stay in the workhouse because they got under a year or whatever, that these are people that are going to come back out into society. So now they're in the uh Justice Center for a year, uh less than a year, and they're locked up all this time. Um, these are people we have to bring back out to our society and try to reenter uh to to reintroduce them to our society and make them productive people. So let's be careful what we do. I am going to support this, but I I'm doing this with the caveat that we need to look at, we still need a second facility. I do not agree we need just one facility. I have no further uh comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh Alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman from the fourteenth. Looks like her, um Alderman from the fourteenth, I think her screen is frozen.
I echo some of the concerns of the Alderman from the first and the Alderman from the twenty-third and the Alderman from the twenty-second. Um my concern is, you know, if we close this larger facility, I have a neighbor that, as a matter of fact, she works at the at the facility on Hall Street and and she commends all the changes that have taken place there. Uh personally, I was up there with uh the farmer Alderman from the twenty-first, um Antonio French, when I first came into office, and the conditions were awful. The, some of the prisoners were slipping in what I would call a boat or a sled. Um but my understanding now that a lot of those those conditions have been ameliorated, and we also visited the Justice Center across the street. I found that even though it was a newer facility, uh very, uh in my opinion, claustrophobic. There's no place to go outside. Um and uh you know, being an outside kind of person, I would find that more inhumane than than being somewhere where I could get outside and work it out in the yard or whatever. But that said, my concern is that if we start moving people out of the city into, you know, using other jails, we're we're not allowing them the right to a speedy tri- trial, the transportation time back and forth, things happening, traffic, what have you. Um, I'm wondering if we're gonna be infringing on their rights in that way. You know, a speedy trial means that they're close to the justice, that they're well-deserved, the accused. Um, so these these things all have to come into play, and I'm not sure. I mean, it seems as though there ought to be some people that forecasters that have a better handle on these numbers and 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 the logistics that it takes to do this. Um, I will support it, but I think we really need to move cautiously and carefully as we move forward. I don't, you know, we're not gonna let everybody out on the street. Um, we need to understand that these people are accused of crimes. Some of them may be guilty, found guilty, some of them may not be. Um but at the same time, I think they deserve human human treatment and a a guarantee to a speedy trial. So I would hope that we we look at those things, all these factors, before we move forward at this and make sure that, you know, people people will be, continue to be or will be treated humanely during this. I would hate to have it come back and recoil and and then we're found, why didn't we think this through more thoroughly? Um, I'm a little concerned about the uh December thirty-first deadline that has been set by this, uh but I guess we can write new legislation to amend it if need be. So uh again, I will support this with reservations. Uh I want to be, you know, as part of the Public Safety Committee, I will be in on this process and and keeping a close eye on it because I really believe people want to be safe in our city, and that's, you know, one of our our first needs, to safety for everyone. So thank you very much, Mr. President, for your leadership with this. Um moving forward, I look forward to continuing working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion, further discussions? Alderman from the twenty-first, you are recognized to close.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. Uh first, I want to uh thank all of my colleagues for their comments uh in their reservations. Uh I think it, I think it is important that we look at all aspects of this legislation in this plan. Uh but we have to be, uh we have to be optimistic about it too. This this board bill does create a plan in a timeline. And the December thirty-first date is it's it's not a deadline to say we closed the workhouse December thirty-first or January first, uh twenty-twenty-one. It says that 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 deadline is, we have a plan, and this is a plan that we're gonna move by. And I would expect every uh member of the Board of Alderman, especially uh the Public Safety Committee uh under the leadership of Alderman Bakaro, my good friend, to be uh step in step uh and in tune with everything that's going on with this process. Um and uh and uh with the Alderman from the first ward saying she think that we, that our city does need two jails uh or two facilities, uh I think that's the case as well. Uh and and with this board bill, uh with the help of the Board of Public Service, uh and of course, the Public Safety Department, uh they will see, uh they they will basically do a study and a rendering on MSI or uh the workhouse to see if it can be. uh, they will see, uh, they, they will basically do a study and a rendering on MSI or uh, the workhouse to see if it can be repurposed. So uh, if the, if the study says needs to be repurposed as a, you know, as a holding facility or as a jail, then they will present those findings to the Board of Aldermen and to the Board of E and A. Uh, and, and, and even with the passage of this bill, uh, it's gonna, it's, it's, it's gonna be two other bills that come afterward uh, in regards to uh, the budget uh, for the workhouse uh, as well. So uh, but again, I, I thank all of my colleagues for their comments. Uh, I think it's important. Uh, uh, but this board bill is, uh, you know, the popper slogan is revisioning public safety. Uh, this board bill does revision public safety. Uh, and with that, Mr. President, I renew my motion and I would ask all of my colleagues support uh, this legislation.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-first, second about Alderman from the twenty-third and the thirteenth that we perfect board bill ninety-two as amended. Madam Clerk, please call, bro.
Alderman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Nigrazia?
Aye.
Alderman Coder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Ty?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Bakaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd? Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd? Twenty-eight aye votes.
By your votes, staying the motion of the Alderman from the twenty-first and perfected board bill ninety-two as amended.
I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk, I think you have board bill, I think it's eighty-seven.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was muted. Board Bill eighty-seven sponsored by Alderman Mohammed and ordinance closing the St. Louis City's O'Fallon Park to the public and prohibiting all uses of O'Fallon Park by the public for the period beginning with effective date of this ordinance and ending January the first, twenty twenty-one.
Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on the perfection of board bill eighty-seven.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I introduce, I move, I introduce this board bill because my park is in complete chaos and disarray. And I've been begging uh, the mayor's office and the Parks Division to come in and help me with this park, keep it safe for residents and keep it safe for everyday park goers. With the, with the pandemic that we were experiencing, where all parks being closed, uh, you know, closed to uh, vehicle traffic and uh, my park was an oasis for people that uh, don't get the chance, the opportunity to experience it. I've seen seniors uh, in the park, I've seen uh, young people in the park, kids in the park having fun. It's something they don't get to do because the park is always filled and populated with uh, illegal activity, drug sales, loud music, uh, beer bottles and trash everywhere. You know, the park looks like, you know, the city dump. Uh, even with the hard work that park crews do to keep it clean, as soon as we clean it, uh, it's back in complete disarray that same day. Uh, and uh, during COVID, we experienced the most peacefulness in that park and I wanna maintain that for my residents. That's why I introduced this board bill.
Alderman from the twenty-first, uh, would you like to make a motion to perfect board bill eighty-seven?
Mr. President, I, I would like to make the motion to place board bill eighty-seven on the informal calendar.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, please make note that I placed board bill eighty-seven on the informal calendar at the request of the primary sponsor.
So noted. That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
Mr. President, board bill number twenty?
All right, board bill twenty, you had us add it to the.
Oh, I, I keep forgetting, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, we were the Spencer line item seventeen uh, through twenty-one, second reading of resolutions.
Resolution twenty-four as amended, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Boyd and Alderman Clark Hubbard urging the mayor and the, and the director of public safety to open discussions with the community support programs on using persistent surveillance as part of crime reduction strategy.
Alderman from the sixteenth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution twenty-four as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I request the clerk read uh, resolution twenty-four as amended, please.
Madam Clerk, please read resolution twenty-four as amended.
Resolution twenty-four as amended urging the mayor and the director of public safety to open discussions with community support program on using persistent surveillance to, persistent surveillance as part of the crime reduction strategy. Whereas according to twenty seventeen Justice Department statistics, the city of St. Louis leads the nation in homicides at a rate of sixty-six point one murders per hundred thousand people. And the various costs of these crimes to the city and the community is significant. And whereas law enforcement agencies across the United States are exploring the use of aerial systems as a crime reduction strategy and to assist with a multitude of policing tasks such as accident and crime scene investigation, search and rescue efforts and oversight. And whereas as part of their crime reduction strategies, many such agencies are also exploring persistent surveillance, the use of photographic systems that cover large areas simultaneously over extended periods of time using aircraft and high vantage points such as buildings. And whereas this technology has shown great potential as a cost-effective tool for broadening crime-related information, gathering and providing critical leads for investigators without increasing staff and the workload of existing personnel and migrating the potential homes to personnel associated with gathering such information in the field. And whereas persistent surve- surveillance also provides oversight for law enforcement agencies by identifying potential police misconduct, providing an unbiased witness in the form of photographic and video evidence and by allowing investigators to identify and approach potential witnesses to misconduct with information to start discussion away from the scene. And whereas the, the Dr. Ross McNutt Community Support Program is a provider of persistent surveillance services and has worked closely with the leaders and stakeholders of the cities to explore the use of persistent surveillance and then tailor its use so as to address their needs while respecting respecting individuals' rights of privacy and building trust between law enforcement and the members of the communities they serve. And whereas the city has the opportunity to enter into the, the, the discussion with community support program about the use of persistence surveillance as part of the city's overall crime reduction strategy. And whereas it is acknowledged that in order for the city to enter into such discussion, there must be broad-based community awareness and therefore the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and its representative, the city's chief technological, techno- technological officer participants is critical. And whereas it is acknowledged that regardless of the effort required and the cost incurred, protecting individual privacies and community improvement involvement must be the central focus of any such discussion with the community support program or any other persistent surveillance provider as well as any contract that the, that they may result from. Now therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis, that we urge the mayor and the director of public safety with the cooperation and input of the city of St. Louis Division of Police, the Criminal Justice Coordinator, the city's chief technology officers to open discussions with the community's support program to explore how to use the persistent surveillance might be employed as part of the city's crime reduction strategy in compliance with the city's surveillance technology use report policy and requirements to ensure the policy of community members is protected. Introduce this twenty-second day of July twenty twenty by the Honorable Tom Odenberg, Alderman Sixteenth Ward, the Honorable Pamela Boyd, Alderman of the Twenty-seventh Ward and the Honorable Shemene Clark Hubbard, Alderman of the Twenty-Sixth Ward.
Alderman from the sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we uh, finally adopt resolution twenty-four as amended, please.
Move by Alderman from the sixteen, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the twenty-seventh and Alderman from the fourteenth. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the sixteenth, any thing further before we open it up for discussion?
Certainly. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, ladies and gentlemen, this is um, uh, an innovative technology uh, that exists and has the ability to significantly aid in solving unsolvable crimes and reducing the violence uh, that is upon the city of St. Louis. Um, it has the opportunity um, to hold um, not only um, violent actors accountable, it has the ability to hold uh, police accountable, it has the ability to interact uh, in a tremendous way with the already existing camera infrastructure uh, that the real-time crime center monitors today. This technology uh, really is a wide area of motion imagery that exists by a private vendor whereby planes fly above municipalities and uh, take imagery and in the form of pixels. So it's not invasive in terms of recognition um, of, of anyone. Uh, but it's a pixel of either uh, human movement and or vehicle movement. And the ability for it to interact with our already existing uh, camera infrastructure uh, which, which clearly is more, more invasive than, than pixels, uh, fifteen to twenty thousand feet in the sky. Um, has the ability to interact and complete the camera network system that we've already, we've already made as a priority in this city to help in crime reduction, help solve crimes. But more importantly, um, in solving crimes, you bring satisfaction to those who have been victimized. And I think it's worthy of our best efforts to adopt this resolution, to call on the mayor's office, uh, the director of public safety and the tech, chief technology officers, uh, the police department, the chief of police, as well as working in concert with the community to ensure that we're having a broad-based conversation um, with all those folks who wanna ensure that privacy is ultimately protected here. I understand there are those who will wanna put a dystopian lens on this to say that we're tracking movements. Uh, the fact is, police already use uh, our cell phones and cell towers in terms of tracking and solving crimes and tracking potential perpetrators uh, and those who are to victimize others in our city. So that technology is already existing. This is a supplement. This is a subsequent strategy of, of that already happening. And again, I think this resolution doesn't, doesn't at all say, oh, this is exactly what we're going to do. Rubber stamp. This doesn't end a conversation, this begins a conversation with those stakeholders who have the power to enter into a potential technology uh, that could reduce harm, it could reduce violence and could bring satisfaction to victims and aid police, keep police safe and keep police accountable, quite frankly. Right? We've, we've had stories in the post dispatch where uh, police were completely out of district, right? Roaming around and uh, there's no management of that. Uh, this has the opportunity to hold that, to hold that behavior accountable as well. That's a part of the conversation that I think um, we need to, we, we need to talk and embrace along with this resolution as well. Um, I will end with, uh, a lot of folks say that, you know, um, we need to be forming strategies um, around more root causes of crime. I one hundred percent agree with that. I think we do need to do that. And I think um, in terms of sequencing though, in terms of sequencing, um, all crime experts will tell you the reduction of violence is first in that sequencing. Cure Violence Program underscores that without a doubt. That, yes, we wanna get control of all the things that we know fuel crime, anti-poverty policies, et cetera. But we also need to make sure that we're stopping the violence and that people are not only feeling safe, but that they're actually safe. And then we can embrace and, and use this technology to really buttress the Cure Violence Program that, that, that we're going to hopefully, you know, um, unveil and, and get started with in terms of its programmatic activity. So, Mr. President, I'll, I'll certainly sit back and yield for questions because I'm sure there, there will be some on, on, on this potential resolution.
First, Alderman from the eighth. Alderman from the eighth.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I, I put my hand down for now.
Okay, I didn't know if you put it down or it went down by itself. Uh, Alderman from the fifteenth.
I put mine down until my background noise clears.
Okay, all right, all right. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so we've had a lot of discussion on this and ultimately uh, I, the thing that I agree with the sponsor of this on is that this is about victims of violent crime. Uh, I work with, I work with uh, victims of, of violent crime on a regular basis and uh, I, I do understand what it's like to have a family member, a friend or yourself be a victim of, of a crime. And my heart goes out to uh, anyone who finds themselves uh, victimized uh, in, in our city and our country, you know, anywhere in the world. Uh, that being said, this is not a solution to that broader issue. Uh, we've seen this roll out in other cities. Uh, it has done nothing to help uh, victims of violent crime. And again, this is a reactionary measure. This is putting a Band-Aid on the cut after it's happened. Uh, we need to be proactive, we need to be looking at how to stop that cut from happening in the first place. This is uh, I, I mentioned in, in a hearing yesterday that uh, this is, it's so dystopian that it feels like a dystopian movie. Uh, I, I received an email after I mentioned that, that said uh, the technology adopted by Persistent Surveillance Solutions and worked on by Ross McNutt for the Department of Defense was developed as a secret project called Gorgon Stare. The man who started the project says that he got the idea while watching the dystopian film Enemy of the State. Uh, that history is retold in the book Eyes in the Sky. So it isn't the case that this is like a dystopian film. A dystopian film inspired this policy. Uh, further, if we look at our own Supreme Court, the Supreme Court of the United States in the Kylo decision, that's K-Y-L-L-O, there was a decision that the highest court in this land looked at thermal imaging and stated clearly that the government cannot use uh, technology to, to look down on the citizenry. So that takes out a huge chunk of this uh, that would otherwise uh, serve to help us because it takes out the idea that you could use this technology at night. Using it at night would be a Fourth Amendment violation. So then we're left with uh, looking at when violent crimes really happen in our city. They happen at night. They do happen during the day sometimes, but the vast majority are happening at night. Uh, so if we leave these, this, this plane gathering a huge amounts of data um, and it's only operating during the day, we're left with the heart of what this is really about. And that's the data set that you can gather when you have the movement of every person inside the city of St. Louis. That's every protest they attend, where they go to church, uh, what stores they go to, what pharmacies they go to, if they stop off at a bar on the way home, if they have a mistress. Uh, this is an incredibly valuable data set. And uh, we've, we've heard that there's going to be uh, protection.
And uh, we've we've heard that there's going to be uh, protections. Uh, I I don't see anything in this bill or any uh, accompanying uh, language that would uh, force the issue on data protection. Further, we've seen uh, in our own city that uh, even when there are laws in place uh, on data protection, that they get ignored. This is an incredibly valuable set of data and an incredibly invasive uh, technology uh, that we've we've seen no success for this elsewhere. Uh, so we have seen this technology in action with zero success. Uh, in fact, other cities have said, you know, get lost. Um, the 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 other part of this that uh, isn't addressed uh, is the incredible cost that will be associated with every uh, criminal case moving forward because this this uh, ends up being what's called Brady material where uh, if the defense or excuse me, if the prosecution has any information relating to the crime, they have to turn that information over, meaning every time that there's a citation issued in the City of St. Louis moving forward, it is likely that any skilled defense attorney is going to request the data from this. That means that there's going to be an incredible amount of manpower dedicated to pulling data in every case. And I mean, I'd pull it for a speeding ticket. You you say I'm speeding, you have this data now, uh, give it to me. It's going to be incredibly expensive for the city. Uh, there's no success for this elsewhere. It's going to cost us uh, a ton of money to litigate this because you gotta believe that this is going to go uh, up the federal courts. People do not want to be surveilled. They do not want to have every time they leave their home, where they're going, uh, how long they spend there. They don't want us in government to know that. It's none of our business. Uh, if if we're serious about reducing crime in this city, uh, I I believe that we should encourage Mr. McNutt to uh, to invest those millions of dollars into our community rather than spying on our community. Uh, and uh, I I I can't be uh, more opposed to this. Uh, the sponsor mentioned that uh, this could help us uh, with police officers that uh, may be out of their district. Uh, I think that's a uh, a disingenuous argument. Uh, if we want to do that, we can uh, certainly just put GPS in police cars. We we don't need to uh, also track my movements uh, and and my constituents' movements. Uh, I've heard people tell me that they will move out of the city if this technology comes into play. Uh, it's it's insane to me that we're having a conversation about turning over our data to any private company. Uh, the reason that uh, that there's someone willing to spend this kind of money on surveilling us is because we are the product. Our data set is the product here. This is not about safety. This is about gathering the data of every citizen in St. Louis and acquiring an incredibly valuable data set. And if we are going to do that, then we need to compensate the citizens of St. Louis for taking that data. And with that, I'll close. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, will the Alderman from the Sixteenth Ward yield for questioning?
Alderman from the Sixteenth will yield for question until the Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth.
I will, yes.
Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Alderman from the Sixteenth Ward. Um, our colleague from the Twenty-Fourth Ward, you know, has some very valid concerns, in my opinion. Um, you did mention, you know, that we have an issue with police leaving the city or leaving districts. Uh, why wouldn't we instead just put GPS in the vehicles for the Police Department? Why why is surveilling the entire city the answer to something like that?
Alderman, I think that was just a byproduct of this. That was one example that that I mentioned that 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 could aid in police accountability, can also aid in um, witnesses. Uh, a crime occurs at an intersection, this allows us to see where the pixels go. Does the pixel stop in the back of an alley and drop a gun? It could aid in the evidence gathering um, and bringing um, satisfaction and justice to victims of said violent crime. So it was just one example that.
So if the data is pixelated, can it be deepixelated?
No.
Who owns the data?
Well, that that's the conversation for when the vendor gets into serious conversations. Again, with 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 oversight, uh, you know, uh, Alderwoman Rice, I'll pause for a minute, has has Board Bill Ninety-five that's been introduced today. I think I fully support uh, the the components of that bill whereby there would be a citizen-led uh, as well as uh, agents of CRIA who would be in lockstep, part of the conversations in any kind of memorandum of understanding or any kind of a contract that would get negotiated so that both the Board of Aldermen and citizens are constantly being informed on the data. So the data could be owned by the city and it could say this is a trial basis and you vendors need to be citizen-sworn deputies of the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department. It could be that there's a data share program, but that ultimately the city controls it. There's a number of iterations. But I understand that um, you know, that 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 conversation around involving and constantly reporting and updating the public is absolutely necessary.
So, and I guess with respect to um, to surveillance as a whole, um, would the entire city be surveilled? Would certain neighborhoods be surveilled? Um, you know, I have to take exception because, you know, I I probably have more homicides in my ward in the last month than you and the Alderman from the Twenty-Fourth Ward have had in your entire wards for the period of your careers. So, you know, I I know that ninety percent or more of the people who live in my ward are really great law-abiding citizens who don't deserve to be surveilled. Um, but if if the focus of this, I mean, I I have concerns whether the focus of this is the entire city or just neighborhoods that have um, you know, high rates of crime. But, you know, I think it's particularly unfair if this is targeting, you know, areas where there's already enough issues with uh, militarized, I'll call it, uh, form of uh, law enforcement. And so, you know, I I I really, I understand your intent is to start a conversation around. Uh, thank you for yielding to questions. I I'm I'm not going to ask any further, but uh, you know, I I really in the strictest sense of um, being able to live a life and pursue happiness and be joyful, having your government surveilling you twenty-four seven, um, I don't believe is productive to any of those pursuits. Um, I understand that, you know, the intent here is to help victims. I one hundred percent, you know, agree with my colleague from the Twenty-Fourth Ward that this, any version, any variant of this would cause pause for me um, without the appropriate policies in place, without um, protecting the privacy of our citizens. Um, and even with the right policies in place, you know, the right owners of data in place, I still have tremendous concerns. I understand, you know, the city already has surveillance cameras. Those are in the public right-of-way. Um, you know, they're largely in our streets and sometimes in our alleys if we're, you know, fortunate enough to have a uh, you know, illegal dumping, you know, camera in our our back alleyways. Those are monitoring the public right-of-way. Um, you know, so I the city has purview over that. I think it's expected in some situations that there would be some sort of monitoring in respect to that. It's not even in every public right-of-way. It's only in public right-of-ways that are large enough to carry fiber optic cable along them, um, which is not all, it it's probably only about maybe forty percent of our roadways. Um, you know, so so I just, I I take exception to that as well. Um, I think that uh, you know, the 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 point that we already have or law enforcement has access to phone records and cell phone towers and pinging off of cell phone towers, they need a warrant in order to get that information. They just can't go and grab it. Um, they need a warrant in order to get it. Um, so, you know, so there are some checks and balances in that process. Uh, it's not just data that's available for law enforcement at any given point in time, like it is in our public public right-of-way. Um, so so, you know, I I appreciate your concern for trying to um, help victims or to uh, you know, solve the large amount of crime that takes place uh, in our neighborhoods. Um, but speaking as someone who experiences that on a very regular basis as opposed to uh, someone who lives in a neighborhood that's quite comfortable most of the time, um, you know, I I just, I have to take exception to this. I don't, I don't think that uh, people quite understand the ramifications that this would have down the road. Um, and and with that, I'll yield my time.
All the men from the Twenty-third. Alderman from the Twenty-third.
Yes, just quickly, just when I was listening to Alderman coming. Um, you know, the one thing, I I always like to have as many tools in the drawer as we can, but the one thing this would track is illegal dumping because they could look at where that pixel link came from, where that pixel dumped all the stuff and where it's going. I I understand everyone's concerns. I I I actually support this because I just think one more tool in the drawer. And and I will also say that thank God my ward doesn't have the murders and all the stuff that some of all the people have to deal with. But, you know, I also know we have to come up with some sort of deterrent. Even if these guys are up up there and somebody's thinking about illegally dumping or committing a crime, they'll think twice knowing that this is, you know, uh, this is up there. Anyway, it's just a comment. Uh, you know, that that's why I plan to support this and I I do understand everyone's points, but when you said illegal dumping, I thought, well, you know what? This definitely will catch the illegal dumpers. But thank you.
Thank you. All the woman from the Nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I took my time in um, looking at this. I've been asked to support it a long time ago, but I had to see more and learn more. And the fact that this is an exploration request, uh, it makes it easier for me because I know I'm going to have the opportunity to learn even more. What uh, is giving me reason to hope that it's not too invasive, but it will help us in solving some of our crime problems, but most especially, you know, we don't have too many conversations about the victims of our city. We have conversations about most everything but the victims. And so if we can give some assistance to taking care of some of these crime issues that we have and most especially uh, finding the people and giving them the appropriate punishment, it will help. In our urban areas, we suffer greatly because people are afraid to get involved. People are afraid to be witnesses. People are afraid, period. And so to talk about you are being watched by the government, every day of your life you're watched by the government. On every move you make, you're watched by the government. Every phone call you make, every email you send, every tweet you make is available to the government. And what came to my mind, as you know, we've been talking about private airport, everything else, my God, how more invasive can it be when you go and stand in that little pod thing and they look through your entire body? The government is everywhere. So um, that's in in this era of our time, we can let all that go because you no longer have any privacy. You you no longer have any ability to say what someone will or can have access to. And uh, we need to move forward. Let's explore it. If there is some technology that we can use and we can limit it uh, that best suits us and serves our needs, then then maybe we should move forward. But again, it's an exploration process and I'd like to learn more. And so now I'm ready today to support it. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All the woman from the Twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I agree with many of my colleagues that we absolutely have a a crime problem in this city that we need to address and we need to explore um, variety of ways to deal with that. And as many have stated, I am most interested in looking at the root causes of crime, how we can prevent people from becoming victims as opposed to waiting for victimization and then jumping in. Um, and I think the argument that we should do anything we can to reduce crime is a dangerous road to go down. And I I know some people think that some of us are imagining a dystopian future, but we don't have to look too far back in our own country's past to see how this sort of government surveillance has has played out. And we're not even talking about persistent aerial surveillance. Um, but surveillance has been used throughout our history to monitor threat, intimidate, and extort people over time, including in the Jim Crow South of civil rights leaders and activists. It was used after World War One, when African-American soldiers were returning to this country. It was used during World War Two of Japanese citizens and Japanese communities, most recently nine eleven. Um, and when you think about what's going on in our country right now, all of the people who are engaged in protests um, and thinking about how this could be used to track and follow people. And I think it's really important that we remember that everyone is not watched equally. And I think that is extremely important when we're thinking about giving away um, our 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 privacy in this way. I mean, the examples of going to the airport or um, you know, what you do on the internet, um, you know, the various places where you have cameras, um, you, that is not, that, you know, my backyard right now is a fairly sacred place. It wouldn't be under this situation. There are, this is, this is very different than choosing to go through certain things that like often in many of those cases, you have to get a search warrant to do the sort of um, surveillance that has been that has been referenced today. Um, or you're going into a situation, no, you know, you, when you buy your airplane ticket, you are accepting that risk. And also your movements are being tracked because you purchased a ticket, for example. So this is a much more invasive system than anything that we are currently experiencing today. And I think the other big issue is the cameras do not stop crime. I mean, I have heard that from um, you know, everyone in law enforcement that I've talked to about this. And I mean, we already know that. We have cameras um, in variety of places around this city and it does not stop crime. Um, and what we're looking at today is just ramping up the use of of the technology that we have. And I think that it's it's short-sighted, um, and I think it is taking us away from looking at the root causes of crime. Instead of dealing with the issues in our community, um, we're going to leave it up to, you know, the eye, the eye in the sky. Um, and I I I cannot support this. I think we need to put limits on what we are willing to give up in terms of our privacy, in terms of our data collection. I think there have been a lot of wonderful examples um, already given today, and I will not be supporting this this resolution. Thank you.
All the woman from the Fifth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and um, members of of the board, I guess. Uh, I'm just taken back by a lot of the comments that I I've heard. Um, and okay, I'm black. I represent my community. I know the need for cameras in our community. Um, in my neighborhood, two minutes from my house, because of the non-for-profit, they purchased their own cameras. They solved one of the first murders in the city that, you know, camera evidence was actually used to solve this murder. Uh, on my front doorstep every day, I have um, young black men with um, AR-15s and Dracos just, you know, walking in the park around small children, and anything can can happen. So when you're a leader and when you're in a community and you represent a community, your notion is to, okay, let's have some cameras. I I've been waiting two years for cameras. I uh, allocated over a quarter of a million dollars for cameras. The bulk of the money was spent on fiber due to, you know, this third world country we're living in over here as far as infrastructure. So in my community, we want the cameras, you know. Um, just a couple of days ago, a kid was murdered in my neighborhood. A a a year before we got a burn grant, a kid was murdered at the corner of Cass and um, Fourteenth or whatever it was. And do you know how overjoyed that mother would would have been to have that captured on camera? So it's like where some may have the luxury of um, So it's like where some may have the luxury of not being watched. Okay, we welcome being watched. If you're not doing anything wrong, then why do you have a problem with being watched? And so when that argument pops up as if I'm not black and I don't understand what, you know, what conditions we are in in my community, then it, that like, it blows me out, out the water because don't use the argument, you know, as if, and, you know, this will be just only put in our community. Many of you have the cameras already. You have cameras we've been waiting years to get in North St. Louis. You know, you have the luxury of having community improvement districts who buy their own cameras, you know. So you're already up under Big Brother watchdog. So when I see this narrative constantly change and when I see people constantly gripe about, oh, well, this will do this to black people, hey, we've had stuff done us for 400 years. Keep doing it, you know, do something to stop crime. And I would definitely love to see the expert that would tell you that cameras do not deter crime because they do. And if you are stupid enough to do something in front of a camera, well, by golly, we need to have a camera there so we can arrest you. So all of this stuff that, you know, we constantly hear about what's in the best interest of our community, that we were elected to represent, and that's the main argument, I, I will always have a problem with it. We welcome the cameras. This, this bill is just for them to explore. I get the importance of data, who will own it, who will have access to it and all of that. We will work that out, but to sit here and say that we don't need cameras in our community when people are dying every day and, you know, there's this no snitch rule and, and you need a camera to make people come to the table and maybe start snitching because they were there and some people are so crazy, they're going live on Facebook while these murders are taking place. So we need the cameras in my community and I just really wish people quit trying to champion the charge of what's best for me and my community because we're living in it. You know, I'm living in a highest concentration of public housing in the entire city. I'm living in the worst zip code in the city and my constituents don't need you advocating for them because you don't even understand them. So I wish we could get past that as a board and just move forward and let people explore and then we'll work it all out and see what's in the best interest. Thank you.
Thank you. All the women, all the women from the 1st. All the women from the 1st. You have to unmute yourself. Yeah, there you go.
I was kicked off again, so I had to get back on. Mr. President, members of the board, I stand in opposition to this piece of legislation, this resolution. The alderman from the 23rd laid out a very clear, very clear reasons of why I am opposed to this. I, I got somewhat gleeful when I heard him mention, you know, enemy of the state because one of the first things the guy in enemy of the state does, Will Smith plays that role, is he starts shedding all of this stuff because that's the first time I really was aware, I guess, of how much, how, how much the government has now gotten into our lives. So he had to take things off his shoes, he was taking his clothes off, and that was such a good example of what I don't want to happen. We in the United States of America have a right to privacy. I don't want to give it away. I'm old enough to remember all the things about Big Brother. This is Big Brother. Going into an airport, you submit to an airport exam, you submit to going through that. But I don't want to leave my house every day and people take pictures of everything I do. That is not what I want to do. We had cameras for a while, the red light cameras, we had problems with those legally and we don't have them anymore. We have what's in the city of St. Louis, we have what's known as fear mongering. Oh, we gotta have this because we, this is just one more tool, we're going to be able to stop crime. No, we're not. We're not going to stop crime that way. And what this does is make certain people feel safe. One of the things that has happened with cameras, because I have cameras in my house and we put them in our alley and we paid for them. And this is what people do and I don't have much dumping in my alley, but some of my other alleys where people have done this, this is what the people do. They cut, they take their license plates off or they put wrong, false license plates on, they put on a mask and you don't have any identification of who they are. I do not want you to follow me every place I, I go. I don't want the government, I don't want private people, I don't want anybody to have my data. One of the things I heard the sponsors of this resolution say is, well, the police, I mean, the phone companies and they already can get this stuff from your towers. When people got cell phones, they never envisioned that this was happening. This was nothing that they knew, much as with Google. People were shocked at how much information Google was collecting, so much so that Google has to now give you ways that you can turn them off. And every time I can, every which way I can, I turn that off. Not, and it's not because I'm doing anything wrong, but I don't even have to prove that I'm not doing anything wrong. I think that is the wrong thought, where if you're not doing anything, so be, so you just go ahead and be taped. That is the wrong thinking. I have a right as a United States American to have privacy and I have an expectation of privacy. That's a legal right. I do not want to give my right away to anybody and I don't want to give the people that I represent their rights away. And when we have conversations about this fear mongering, the one thing that we always get to is that when they say, oh, we're going to do this, and then they say, well, we haven't gotten many ways. And I, and I've talked to them and I said, well, you can buy your own camera if you're trying to catch somebody in the alley. Now, these are the downside, this is the downside, but this is the upside. You don't have to buy a camera that costs a million dollars that connects to anything. You can put cameras in your own alleys and things, in your own neighborhoods, and we've done that up and down our alley, but we don't have much dumping, but we have it, but it's not inviting everybody and anybody into our habit. It is people going down an alley, which an alley is really the property of the people who live there. That's why the alley was put there. It's for the use of the people who live there and city services. It's not for your street anyway, it's not for strangers to be down. So when I hear people making the argument that, well, if you're not doing anything wrong, you shouldn't want to be, you shouldn't have a fear of being photographed or taped, is ridiculous argument. Our own police don't want to be photographed. They don't want GPS. They don't want cameras. Someone said, put the GPS on their cars. I want to put the GPS on their walkie-talkies or their badges because they should be followed. We should know where they are. We should never have a case again where the police officers have left their places where they are supposed to be and then they end up, a young female is, police officer is, is killed because the police officers were not at work. So now, when you go to work, that's a different thing. Now you're inviting and you're a police officer and you're given the right to actually take people's life. So those are the first people that we should be monitoring. They're the people that scream the loudest about their right. I don't believe they have a right to privacy while they're at work, but they're the people that scream the loudest. But everyday citizens, they have a right to expect that they're in their backyard, that nobody is flying over taking pictures. They have a right to think that if they drive to Walgreens five times, that somebody's not collecting that data. And so people who don't care about people collecting your data, you may not care right now, but you don't know what that data is used for in the future. And so there are things that we cannot even imagine that it could be used for. And I will give this example. When I moved in my house in 1986, there were no cell phones except for, if you watch the movies, they had some in the jeeps and things like that. So there was no way I could imagine the technology that's going to be here. So the people who are putting this technology out, they know where they're going with this. We are the people that do not know where we're going with this. So it is not a good idea, it is no way a good idea to have planes up spying on citizens. That is the things that they made movies about in the 60s, 70s and 80s about Big Brother. That's the whole concept of Big Brother, that we tell people that the police have more rights or some private entity has more rights to know about you than you would even want your sister, brother, maybe your husband, anybody else. You just have to have some privacy rights. So to say, oh, this, these things cannot be changed and they could be unpixeled as the alderman from the 25th asked, maybe right now they can't. You don't know what technology will do in the future and it's not something I even want to know about. I don't want that. I don't want to be submitted to that. I think this is not a good board bill. I think the right to privacy is something that we are guaranteed to have. And so even opening, opening up a conversation about that, I've known the public safety director for 40 years. I do not want the public safety director to be inquired into my life and I can tell you that he wouldn't want me to be inquiring into his life and taking pictures. So that's a, a freedom that I want to keep. And I've never had anybody saying, we want airplanes and things flying over us so they can take pictures of us. And in fact, when there have been too many airplanes or helicopters flying over our communities, I have had major complaints from people asking, were they taking pictures? What are they doing? Why are they doing this? In anticipation of your resolution, I have gotten a lot of emails, of conversations from people saying, you are not going to let that happen. We already let telephones be monitored that we didn't know. We have GPS on telephones that we didn't know about. We didn't want this stuff. I have some people now that still don't use cellphone technology because they don't want to be monitored. They don't want people to know what they're doing and not that they're doing anything wrong, it's because they are United States citizens and they have a right not to want that. And so for me, everything I can, I turn off. I don't want GPS tracking me. I turn it off and I always laugh and think about Tony Soprano because again, you're naive sometimes. I used to watch The Sopranos and when he would get a card, he said, let me get rid of this GPS. I was like, well, what, what is he talking about? And now, years later, I understand because even when you're not giving people permission, they're tracking you. That, that is not a good argument to me to tell me, well, we're already violating your rights, so let me violate your rights a little bit more. Let me violate your privacy a little bit more. That's not a good argument. If somebody wants to give you written permission to do that, or if they submit to a job that they know that that's what has to happen, or you go to a situation like an airport where there is vast public safety or getting on a plane and making sure people don't have weapons, then that's a different thing. But a large scale, let me just fly over your city and collect your data and we're not, we're not going to even tell you what that data is going to be used for right now. And it may be 10 or 15 or 20 years down the line because we're good at that, at this Board of Aldermen. We push things down so that the people forget that these things are even in existence and then they come up and they use this kind of technology. And we tell minority communities, oh, this won't hurt you, this is good for you. See, this is policing. You'll get better police service, you'll get better this. No, you won't because the root of crime, wherever it is, and it's not just in minority communities, because I lived in South St. Louis for seven, eight years and I can tell you about the crime down there. It's in communities that services have not been given to, that they don't give the same attention to, that they take away services. I used to have really good police services up until this administration. The police chief was one of my majors, he did a really good job. We have horrible police service now. And it's not about the murders, it's about the community policing that they do not provide, that they're so, that this administration is so intent on murders that you're not intent on preventing murders, that you would take money from recreation centers. That's the kind of thing that you should be putting more money in, not less, that you would think Forest Park is more important than all of North St. Louis. That's what's wrong. There is no way I trust this administration to be having any conversations because what I saw the other day was that when something happened at her front door, wow, you ought to see, I, I have to drive by there all the time. You ought to see, and I used to live around the corner, I lived on Waterman, right around the corner. I saw the police that we never see in our community. There were 20 police officers probably out there, they were putting up gates, they were doing everything. Now, the police come from my community to get there. We don't see them. My back door looks out at King's Highway. I tell this to the police chief, I've told him and I've told it to the public safety director who lives around the corner from me. We don't see the police and it's not that I want them to be doing anything except for proactively driving around, letting people know that we're doing community policing, stopping the small crime that doesn't get to big crimes. Instead, no, we can't have that. What we can have is helicopters that come and take people's information and give it to a private company. And this is all part of that big privatization. Ever since I've been down here, it's one thing after another, from trash that they've tried to privatize, to the water division, to the airport. There's always this Big Brother Republican-driven agenda about privatization and increased police military presence. And this is a, not a police state, this is our freedom and yes, we want things to stop, we don't want crime to happen. But I, I tell you right now and I give this example, I live right in the middle of North St. Louis. We don't have much crime on my street. We don't have much crime because they are working and middle class and upper middle class people in my, in my area because they have a penny more and they can address some of the issues. They have services. That was the thing I did for a lot of times. They have a grocery store they can go to, they have a hardware, I mean, not a hardware, a Walgreens, the things that other people take for granted. We're getting ready to get a hardware store. We have banks. So the people that live there, they work and go to, and go to school and do these things and there's not big crime. Once in a while, something bad happens and we might have a murder, but that's not mostly our everyday occurrence in my community. And so there are things that you can do. Instead of looking at success and saying, what are you doing? How is this happening? Can we do more of that? The money that we're talking about spending or the opportunity to let people invade our rights and invade our privacy, that's immediately where we go. Not let's take, you know, when young people say, defund the police, what they're saying is redirect the money. Don't put more money, we'll be incredibly tone deaf if we do not hear. If we hear that we finally had to close the quote unquote workhouse, but we don't hear that in connection with that, there's also this thing of more money for the police and more police, none of it has worked, none of it. I've been here, I first came here in 91 and I don't care how many raises we've done, it has not worked. And just adding another layer, this is not a tool, this is an invasion of my privacy. And I agree with the alderman from the 23rd, so what's going to happen when you try cases? Everybody's going to be subpoenaing those records, it's going to slow cases down, it's going to cost a lot of money and it is not worth anybody's right to privacy to have this pie in the sky belief that if we somehow get these planes, that this is going to solve crime. This is just another way for an, or business or the city to collect data on people and we're on our way to becoming a police state and it is ridiculous and we do not want to be a police state. We want to remember that we have the freedom to be an American citizen and that some of those freedoms, there are some burdens with that, I will not, I disagree with that, but I would never want to trade place with the people who don't have freedom. And that's the reason why many people want to come into our, our country because of the very freedoms and the rights that we hold true and that we are so proud of and we're chipping away at them all of the time, every time we're talking about having something like this occur. And so I am opposed to this. I will make, I'm requesting a roll call because I can't imagine in any way giving away my right and having planes fly over me. I, I feel sorry for the movie stars and people when they got these, I think that these long lens cameras ought to be illegal. There ought to be a place where you can be in your house or travel up to your grocery store, whatever, that you don't have Big Brother looking at you. And so this is on its way to that and I am opposed to it. And I want to thank the alderman from, from the 23rd Ward and the 25th Ward for doing such a good job of speaking to the issues. I have no further comments.
Thank you. All the woman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I understand that this is a resolution simply to explore the idea of using persistent surveillance system. I guess I would argue that that work is already being done around the country for us. We have such limited resources and capacity within the offices that we are asking to task with taking on whether or not this is going to be a smart solution. And there are places that are immediately ahead of us that we can be learning lessons for, or lessons from, I apologize. Baltimore is one of those places. And there was a report released by the Police Foundation back in 2017 that nobody's really bothered to take a look at there. And that's why when persistent surveillance system came to us back in August of 2019, why the mayor's office was not interested, the intelligence unit in the police department was not interested, advocacy organizations, none of those entities in my conversations with them were, thought it was a smart way to move forward. There, there are questions that need to be answered, some of which are, are contained in the resolution. But when Baltimore secretly partnered without telling elected officials back in 2015 with this system and they were secretly flying planes over Baltimore during the time when Freddie Gray was murdered, there was no data that they were able to, to utilize when they were flying that helped with solving any crimes at all. And so I think we need to be asking ourselves, you know, the ACLU has a lawsuit in Baltimore that's talking about testing for constitutionality. We need to be looking at other places to see if things like this are even going to We need to be looking at other places to see if things like this are even going to be admitted as evidence to solve crimes. We do not want to give some of our most vulnerable residents um who are victims of crime or who have loved ones killed um violently um a false sense of hope that this is going to solve their, you know, get them some sense of justice when it might not. We have no idea of the efficacy of this at all. Um and I think we need to be very careful about taking a military-grade surveillance system that was first used in Fallujah um uh and and putting it upon our citizens uh without, you know, having some real idea that this is going to be something that can help solve solve crimes here. And so I I guess I would encourage us all to take a pause. I don't think that there's any reason that this resolution needs to move forward today. I think we should take time and look at what's happening around the country, especially in Baltimore, and learn lessons from them. Um and and then maybe uh reconvene and determine if it's a a smart move for the city of St. Louis. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the third, your hand was up, it's down now, but I don't know if it just aged out. And Alderman from the third. One more time, Alderman from the third. All the one from fifteenth. Your hand was up and it went down. All the one from fifteenth. Alderman from the twenty-first. Alderman from the twenty-first. Other woman from the fourteenth. All the one from fourteen.
My hand is down now. Thank you. Everything's been said.
Okay.
I have nothing else. Everybody said everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All the woman from the twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to rise again in support and I do hear all the concerns and all the reservations as well as all the anticipation about this type of program coming into our city. But what I do like is that it's a conversation starter. I thank uh Alderman Oldenburg for bringing it forward, even though we had the after we had the conversation prior to last year in public safety. Um I also support Alderman Rice and Board Bill ninety-five and she knows that. So I think if we work collectively and putting both of them forward, that it'll make a difference. Because one thing that was said in this conversation was that, um and I don't remember who said it, but everyone is not watched equally. That's true. Everyone is not watched equally. Some of your neighborhoods have camera systems, layers of camera systems on them with personal cameras, with cameras that were bought by CID's, with the businesses that are around because some of you are afforded a lot of businesses in your neighborhoods will have cameras. There's layers of cameras on top of people's personal phones that they carry with them every day that had that people can reach to. But in other neighborhoods, they don't have anything. They call trying to get monies to get a Ring camera. They want cameras. So we can't just turn our back on people that are not afforded the same opportunities as some of our other areas or and say just throw everything out. This starts the conversation. And it sounds like, and I believe when he says there's going to be a publicly-led conversation, again, with Board Bill ninety-five in place or working on that as well, so we can all come together and make all of our citizens in the city of St. Louis feel protected like some of our select areas in the city of St. Louis feel. I watch and I see people when they bring camera footage to me, when they bring pictures to me. And I'm talking about uh policing pictures, not just somebody's pictures out their cameras. Those cameras are very clear. Those cameras take great pictures. They have all that evidence when they walk in. Some of our places where you have one house on a block and everything else is torn down or LRA and then they become victimized. They don't have anything. We need some kind of, I understand the the Big Brother theory and I understand the the concern about that. But at the same time, we have to come to a medium for our constituents that want something, that are crying out to have some layer of some layer of surveillance support or something that they can fall on to feel like they're being protected the way other communities and areas and neighborhoods are being protected. So again, I understand everything that's being said, but you see, I'm a co-sponsor, so I support this conversation being started. Um and I just look forward to working collectively to make sure, again, all of our neighborhoods feel protected the way just right now some of them are. Thank you.
Thank you. All the one from the fifteenth. I see you back. We lost you for a second.
Thank you.
All right. Please proceed.
Keep having some issues with my internet today. Wanted to just um elaborate on a a couple of things that have been said already. Um I if the older woman from the six had not brought up Baltimore, that's what I was planning on doing. Um so I I called over to a number of city council members actually in Baltimore. I requested MOU for Baltimore, which I have. So if anybody is interested um in the in their MOU agreement, I'm more than welcome to share that agreement. Um but in my conversation with um Councilman Burnett, um you know, he talked about a lot of very concerning efforts um surrounding persistent surveillance in Baltimore. He represents a community that is very much um like most of North City. Um and he said one of the the biggest challenges that um they've had and one of the biggest complaints is that these planes are flying about thirty uh seventy-five hundred to three uh thirty-five hundred feet. Um and and they're going around his community at such a low level that they are very noisy and they are producing a lot of noise pollution uh for residents in his community. Um that was one of the things that that he said. The second thing he said is that they were also promised a very publicly-led campaign with a lot of public engagement. But what this really was in Baltimore was an AstroTurf campaign. Um the the organization um pushing this came in, uh paid a number of kind of high-profile people to speak on behalf of uh the surveillance system to seem as though there was community support that really didn't exist. Um and there's been a tremendous amount of backlash from the community since this program has been implemented, so much so um that the new mayor who is who got recently got elected and will take office uh January, at the beginning of January, actually won his campaign um running against persistent surveillance. And the folks who uh were were in favor of this system overwhelmingly lost their their elections. And so I think that there is a cautionary tale um on that end, too. I think the other thing we need to talk about is in the nine months that this program has been operational in in Baltimore, there has been no clearance of homicides or shootings as a result of this system. Um so as a as of um the time that this has been in place, uh and that is from a a news article that was just uh posted, I think, a couple of days ago, maybe two or two weeks ago. Um it has not yielded public safety benefits, but what it has done is produced a nuisance for a lot of residents of the city. And I also want to um go back to something that the older woman from the first said, and that is about privatization. And I think that that is that is actually the end-all, be-all goal here. It's not public safety. It's monetization of data. Um we we are um a- as the older men from the the twenty-four said, we are the product. Um and so our data is very valuable because it tells um all of these companies all of our shopping habits, all of our moving habits, and it is the monetization of that data um that really is is the thing that is um that it is is the most valuable piece of this. Um and what we're also doing is we are giving um over uh a public safety mechanism to a private entity. And private entities don't necessarily have to abide by the same rules that a government does. And I think we have to to recognize that, too, in terms of protection of constitutional rights. And I I think that this is an extremely scary step. Um I too have heard from constituents who said that they will move out of the city. Um we do have some uh cameras on South Grant that came in um prior to me getting elected. And I will say I refuse to allocate additional funding toward cameras. They do not work. They are expensive. And and it's it's money that we should be spending on addressing the root causes of crime. Crime is too high in our city. We all know that. Um but I think as you know, um Benjamin Franklin uh said, I want to make sure I I get the exact quote here, but um he said, those who give up freedom for security deserve neither. And I think that that is a very cautionary tale as well, that um that if we are giving willing to continue to give away our freedom in 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 support of so-called security, um at some point in time, we will not have freedom either. And I think that with the current uh Trump administration, we have seen this. We have seen um an erosion of civil liberties that actually predates. Um you know, the Trump administration, you can look at, you know, surveillance that um started with the onset of the the war on drugs over the Reagan years and how um that those surveillance systems actually um have reduced have created a number of of lawsuits. And a lot of our constitutional case law around um civil rights actually has to go back to um government trying to enforce laws under the war on drugs. Um I think we are in a very, very slippery slippery slope right now. Um and I would not want to be giving uh my data, my whereabouts to to private companies. Um and I would also not like the government to have that data either, um especially with the erosion of that we have been seeing uh in the country at a at an escalating pace. So I would encourage us to uh listen to the tale of Baltimore to um a- and I know that the the council people in Baltimore would be would love to talk with members of the Board of Aldermen here about their experiences with this. Um and I am happy to facilitate that conversation as well, um as this has not worked out um the way that it was it was sold to them. And there have been a lot of negative uh repercussions as a result of this. And um and and they are continuing to fight it. There's it's a pilot program right now. Their fight is to um ensure that that the new program um that a uh a long-term contract is not get signed um before the the new mayor takes office, um who who has vowed not to sign that contract um because of all of the negativity um associated with this. So I encourage us to um put money into social programs, put money into the things that actually reduce crime. Um if we're going to have philanthropic dollars come into our city, have that go to address the root causes of crime, not to put an entire city, an entire population under surveillance. Um because we all know that you're not doing anything wrong until you are. And that goalpost can move and that goalpost can move very quickly. And we do not need to be playing into this uh authoritarian game. Thanks.
Alderman from twenty-first. I'm from twenty-first. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um I I certainly respect all the concerns of my colleagues um that have been expressed today. As a family member who is has been a victim of violent crime in which on July the fourteenth, my nephew would be gone for years. He was murdered in the neighborhood that I represent. I hear that we need to deal with the root cause and I agree a hundred percent. But we kind of almost know what the root causes are, you know, just a few of them, you know, the cycle of poverty, the cycle of oppression, lack of opportunities for people in socially economically distressed neighborhoods to thrive, witnesses that are afraid to come forward. Now, witnesses are afraid to come forward because of the fear, the real fear of retaliation. I support camera surveillance, I in this form that the Alderman of the sixteenth ward is is proposing as far as just doing a study of it. Now, this isn't a board bill. It it's just uh as as my colleague from the twenty-six eloquently said, it's a conversation starter that I will hope we could see through. We don't have to engage in the process, and I agree one hundred percent, that we should monitor Baltimore. We should look at what's happening in Baltimore. I've heard the comments about how there's been failures over time with this technology. But guess what? Failure is always an opportunity for success. We learn from our failures. So we should learn from every city that has taken on this challenge of using this surveillance and it has failed. And if the city of St. Louis decides it is something that it wants to engage in, we should be able to do it better than how we've seen it done in other communities. You know, with technology and the cell phones and the smartphones that we can't get enough of, I mean, some of us are tweeting and Facebooking, you know, five minutes a a day, every five minutes. We download free apps. And oftentimes, we download these free apps because they're fun. They're games. We do it for our kids. We do it for our friends. And if you don't pay attention in these apps, you give the app permission to know your location, to seek data, and you just kind of do it without thinking about it because it's such a cool app. Now, granted, most people on the Board of Aldermen are probably smarter than me. But I am guilty of downloading apps. And then I'll get a notification that it's doing something. I have to go and say, oh, wait a minute, stop, uh-uh, let me, let me, let me kill that. And I even had to um uninstall apps on my computer. Now, I am not for taking away anybody's rights. But let's talk a little bit about camera uh cameras in the alley. So you have a camera in the alley and every time you go out to take your trash out, it's going to take a snapshot of you. Every time, whoever drives down the alley, that camera is going to take a snapshot of you. On a regular basis, I have constituents calling me begging for cameras in their aisles, knowing that it's going to take a picture of them. And but they don't care because they want to catch the perpetrator. They know they're not doing anything wrong and so they don't mind. If we're governing ourselves as model citizens and we're being surveilled almost everywhere we go, we shouldn't care. You, I think, if I had to ask for a neighborhood where there's an oversaturation of cameras, where you probably can't go too many different corners without somebody being able to track you, I would probably say the Central West End. And I I could be wrong. And so I I don't want to put that out there and be wrong. So I would like to ask my colleague from the twenty-eighth ward, would she yield?
All the one from twenty-eighth, will you yield for questioning to the Alderman from the twenty-second?
Yes, I will.
Alderman from twenty-second, please.
No, I think most of us are envious of the community that you live in. You got great places to shop, great places to eat, beautiful homes, well-intact neighborhood. Um but you also have one of the most strongest business association in your neighborhood. And you have Washington University over there. And these different entities have paid for cameras in your community. Do you have a guess about how many cameras are in your neighborhood?
Are you referring to the twenty-eighth ward? I do not live in the Central West End. So are you talking about the Central West End? Are you talking what I guess, could I just get some clarity?
Well, I I I you represent Euclid in Maryland, right?
Yeah, that's in the twenty-eighth ward, yes.
Okay. And that's kind of the, we call it the Central West. It's not the Central West End?
It is. I do not live, I personally do not live in the Central West End. Sorry.
I know, I know where you live. I'm saying your ward and those neighborhoods. That's what I'm speaking about. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, okay. So yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. I do not know the exact number between personal home cameras, Ring cameras. Um I mean, I'm sure there are, you know, dozens, if not hundreds.
Um let's just, because I think the Ring cameras are bonuses because the individuals have to purchase those and manage those. But let's just talk a little bit about the the ones that are the the businesses have paid for. How many you think they're monitored?
Are are you, how many cameras that businesses have paid for on their own?
Yeah, the associated.
Are you, well, so there's a difference between a a business purchasing a camera versus like a um a special business district.
Right. Okay. So so let's let's say collectively, the special business district and businesses that have cameras, about how many do you think would be in your community?
I mean, I would honestly be making a guess. You know, I I don't know. I mean, I told you. I mean, it's at least in the dozens. I wouldn't be surprised if there are more than, I mean, if we're just talking about business-owned cameras. I mean, I I don't, a lot of businesses have cameras up. I mean, I really, I I I do fear to put a number out there and be quoted on it because I really do not know. But it is a lot. I am not, I am not disputing that there are a lot of cameras in specifically in the Central West End business districts.
I don't want to offend you, please. But if I said a hundred, would would that be too much? If I educated guess about a hundred?
I I don't know. I mean, I think your point that there are a lot, I I mean, is is a good one. I mean, I think your point that there are a lot, I mean, is a good one. I'm not disputing that.
Thank you, Alderman. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I don't want to put misinformation out there either, okay?
Yeah, neither do I.
Okay, so my point is, there are certain neighborhoods that we may travel, and there's a lot of surveillance. And actually, there's nothing we can do about it, because they're owned by private entities. Now, certainly, the government people would argue with me that, but the government is different. So as a business owner, if I have cameras, I can maintain my data as long as I want to, and I can send it to whoever I want to. I think as a government entity, certainly, we should be responsible with the safeguard of that data. I'm just interested in exploring a process of how we can work collectively together with a surveillance system that will help reduce the anxiety of witnesses coming forward to put these bad people away. Because we have some really, really bad people in our communities, and people have a right to be living in fear of retaliation if they witness a violent crime. I shared yesterday, and I just had to send this photograph, it's ugly, to the Public Safety Director, of young people standing out there in the streets. They have taken over Dressel. They've just taken it over. And those senior citizens are beset themselves, they're living, they're in fear in their own homes, and a lot of them have lived over there for 30, 40, and 50 years. I want them surveilled. I want to know who they are and why are they disrupting the quality of life of the people in this neighborhood when they don't live here? And yes, they're shooting dice, selling drugs, they've just taken over. I want them surveilled. They do not need to be in our communities. And I respect the fact that some of my colleagues would say that's awful, and that's not fair. But at the end of the day, we are afraid, we are living in fear of people. I represent people who are living in fear. And unfortunately, you know, they think Aldermen are superheroes, right? We have magic wands, we have all these superpowers, and they complain, and they tell us all this stuff, and we say, "Well, I'm telling the police chief, I'm calling the mayor, I'm doing..." But nothing's happening fast enough. You know why? Because it's not just about Jeffrey Boyd. It's not just about the 22nd Ward, it's the 3rd Ward, it's the 4th Ward, it's the 5th Ward, it's the 1st Ward, it's the 21st Ward. It's a lot of the wards who are suffering from socioeconomic depression. And we need some help, and we need some hope. And the last thing I want to do is step on somebody's rights. But I don't want to keep hearing this conversation about, without offending anybody, getting to the root cause, because I hear it over and over and over and over and over again. And I have been part of some experiences where we put money out there for training opportunities, for educational opportunities. But one thing I know is, you can't make them take advantage of it. It's going to take a couple generations before we can fix this, but we have to start somewhere. It's kind of like dismantling structural racism. If we never have the conversations today, and keep those conversations going, and interact with each other on a regular basis so that we can understand, appreciate, and value the differences that we have to offer, we will never make real change. And so, as a victim, as a family member, as a victim, and my sister-in-law needs to do a balloon release, a balloon release on July the 14th annually, because she pleads every year for somebody to please come forward and help us solve this murder. I'm asking you, this is only a resolution, that's all it is, the resolution. I'm asking you to support the victims, and at least have the conversation to get to the end of the process. I'm not asking you, do it. We don't have to pull the trigger, but can we please just have the conversation? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, Alderman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. I wanted, first of all, I just, I want to thank the Public Safety Committee for having a public hearing on this resolution. When the persistent surveillance presented to Public Safety last year, it was not a public hearing, and so members of our community were not able to testify, and they were yesterday. And so I do want to acknowledge that and say thank you for listening to voices both in opposition and in support of this program. A couple of the things that I continue to hear is that people do actually have footage. One of the people who testified yesterday in support of this program said, you know, "I know who murdered my son."
Alderman, you're breaking up.
We keep hearing that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, connection issues over here as well. Just continuing to hear that even when there is video available, when people bring video to us or bring video to the police, it is not resulting in convictions, it's not resulting in arrests. And I just want to be clear that we're not offering a false sense of hope here. There may be promise in something like this for leading to investigations. That is not happening. When these planes are flying, they're gathering data, and there've been, there's been data shown to be on a separate server. We're concerned about where that data is going, but it hasn't led to investigations, it hasn't led to convictions. And so, to be very specific about what we're doing here, I think is really important. And talking about what this would look like if planes were flying at 3,500 feet. They say that they're flying between 15 and 20,000 feet, but that's not how they were tracked. Incredibly low. One resident compared the noise to that of a leaf blower outside their house every time the plane flies over. And that's a significant issue. And when we're looking back to the War on Drugs, we're looking back to the overpolicing of Black communities that has in part led to where we are today, part of that is because of overpolicing, it's over-surveillance, it's wrongful conviction, it's the police barging in on homes and grabbing the wrong people, or grabbing up whole members of the community and locking them up in jail. And we've taken a major step today, and I want to respect that, and I want to celebrate that, that as we move towards a deep, as we're looking to keep more people out of jail, and we're looking to take that money and reinvest it in the community, those are all really good things. But if we also layer on one more layer of law enforcement that is going to make it very difficult for people to defend themselves against evidence that comes from these planes, you know, I just, I am very concerned that, you know, either this isn't going to help us solve anything, this has the potential to incarcerate the wrong people without the ability to defend themselves. You know, there's, I have a lot of concerns. And so I am also grateful to the Aldermen from the 16th for amending the resolution and including the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and the Chief Technology Officer. I would love to see a requirement that any agreement, any memorandum of understanding signed with persistent surveillance comes back to the Board of Aldermen. And I think that Board Bill 95 does have some say in that, and so we'll be, I'm looking forward on Monday in Public Safety, and so we can talk about that. It's just very important to have, as we move these conversations forward, as much public input as we possibly can on what this is actually going to look like, what it's actually going to do, what the hope that it may or may not offer is, and what those unintended consequences are. If they're offering to pay for the first year, that's great, but what do we do with all of that data? Data is incredibly expensive to store, to have records kept on, and to have attorneys, both prosecution and defense, digging through all of that data as they move through every single case. So there's lots of pieces to this, and I'm not supportive of this resolution today. I think, you know, it sounds like there's enough support for this to pass today, but I would, again, like to thank us for having a public conversation, for hearing each other out on this. And this is not, like the Alderman from the 26th said, this is not an either-or. We're not talking about privacy or allowing crime in our city. That's a false choice that's being presented. This is both working on what is truly happening in our city and our communities, and working towards solutions that prevent crime in the first place, to help people have real hope, but also have checks and balances on what we're allowing our government to do. So I rise in opposition today in the process.
Thank you. Alderman from the 23rd.
It's really fast, because I know we're belaboring this, and we got a meeting we're supposed to be in, in rolls and engrossment right now. But for the Aldermen from the 24th and 15th, the one thing I will say is, there's more people leaving the city, which you're going to see in the next census, because of crime in schools. So, and again, this is just a discussion as to how we start to try to look at these things, but you're going to see that we have a population drop, and the census is definitely going down. And by saying that putting these cameras in, people are saying they're going to leave, I can tell you, especially being the neighboring ward of 24, the people that I have seen leave aren't worried about cameras, they're leaving because they see crime getting closer, and the schools not getting any better. But I just throwing it in, it's not an assault on anybody, I'm just saying, people are leaving the city because of crime, not because of the cameras. In fact, I get calls every day, people wanting cameras in their alleys, people want more cameras. So I don't see anybody leaving the city because of cameras, or saying, gee, I went out of the city because there's too many police in my neighborhood, so I'm leaving. There's too much protection, so I'm out of here. People are leaving because of crime, and we have to stop the crime somehow in the schools. And we have to figure out how we're going to make the schools better. But those are the reasons I'm leaving. For those that say, gee, if this comes about, I'm leaving, you know, I would think they'd be far and few in between, because a ton of people have already left. It seems like the more people that have money, especially in some of the more needy your neighborhoods, or the more crime neighbors that have more crime, they seem to be getting the bigger population loss, because the people that can afford to aren't just leaving to come south, they're leaving to go St. Charles and far, as far away as possible. Anyway, that's my quick comment. I'm hoping we get this to an end, because we do have to do the rolls and engrossment meeting, which starts in five minutes. And I'm going to log into that on a separate computer.
Right, thank you. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I feel like we have a disconnect here. And this goes back to what I said about the fear-mongering. Many years ago, the Bill Clinton era, we got three strikes, you're out, we got tough on crime, and Black legislators were the people pushing it. This is great, this will help our community, this is what we need. It didn't. We need more police. It did not help. That was not the solution. Now we're having to walk that back. In these last few days, we've been doing some great legislation, the legislation about reform on what the police can do, get rid of no-knock warrants, get rid of the chokehold. Those are the things that we need to do for police reform. So then I look, and we're coming back and saying, okay, we're doing police reform, then we're going to take this big step and put everything back a different way. You cannot police yourself out of crime and poverty. That is not how you do it. We were on our way, and now we have a disconnect. I heard the Alderman from the 23rd say that there's no one who wants less police. Police does not equal protection, and as we've seen on the news, police can equal death and harassment in communities. For many years, when I would see the police stop a young Black child, I would stop, get out of my car, still do it, and sit there in case they needed an attorney. And if the police would say something to me, I would say, well, I'm probably going to be their attorney. And I would watch, and especially after, I was out at the Galleria a couple of years ago, and the committee man from the 26th and I were out there, and the police came and searched these Black kids' cars, and I want to say, everybody got off their cameras, and they filmed the police, because they were so worried about these children, and they kept them for like three or four hours and found nothing. And so, police does not actually equal protection all the time. So when we go back to this thing of why we are doing the things we're doing, why we are saying you can't do a chokehold, it's not because the police have been protecting Black people, it's because they've been killing Black people. That's why we have Black Lives Matter. That's why we're saying, stop killing us. So the police do not equal protection for Black people. So stop acting like that that's what it means, okay? Now, we would like to think that's what it means, that's what I grew up thinking. I am a police person, I grew up right down the street from the police, but I've had to learn that doesn't equal that, not only for young children, for my own husband, for my, the people in my community. That's why we're passing these laws. So then, why would we pass these laws saying, you can't, you know, if the police was doing everything right, we wouldn't have to say, no chokehold? We wouldn't have watched a policeman put his knee on a Black man's neck and watched his life drain out of him. That was because there's a disconnect about us. They don't think of us as human beings a lot of times. And he was all right with it being filmed, full camera, with people standing there, and he's with his hand in his pocket and killed the man, murdered him. So stop acting like that somehow we get these cameras, it's going to be better. What we're talking about is violating people's rights. And I want to say, while we were talking, I started getting these pings, and it was my constituent saying, please protect my privacy. So if people want this to be over their community, then they should put it over there, put it right on over there in the 16th Ward, I think that's a good place for it. And don't put it in the 28th Ward, or the 15th, or the 8th, or the 1st, don't put it here. If the 5th wants it, put it there. But it is noisy. The night that Captain Dorn got killed, and he was my 8th District Captain for a long time, I knew something happened. I woke up, and I actually made a notation on my iPad, because the planes and things were so noisy. And I said, Sterling, what is going on? And I wrote like at 2:30 or something, and then the next day, I found out that Captain Dorn had been killed. But this is something, they're not going to fly way up, and they're telling you that they're going to continue to come back, and then they'll come back if they get this, and they'll say, well, we need to be a little closer. And this is what has happened with anything, if you've been at this board for a long time like I have, they come with one thing, and before it's all over, it's something entirely different. And I always use gambling as the thing that you used to have to move up and down the river, then you had to have a water, then you had to have a moat, and then you had to have a glass of water, and they just keep coming back. And when you give up your civil liberties and your civil rights, that's what makes a police state. And that is what I am opposed to, a police state. I don't even want to have a conversation about how I give up my rights. So if you can have that conversation all you want to, but at the end of the day, I'm not going to support it, I hope other people don't support it, have it, and especially, I'm scared when you're talking about giving it to a private company. And I don't know what people have said to encourage us that it's a good idea. The fact that somebody, I feel sorry for the Alderman from the 22nd about his nephew, many of us have had people who have been victims of crimes, and some of us have had people who have perished from that victim of crime. But that in itself does not override the United States Constitution, my right for privacy. It never is, it's never going to justify it. And the day that it does, then we are no longer the United States of America, we are something that we always have prided ourselves. And whoever said about this is like Donald Trump, this is exactly the kind of thing that he would be pushing. He thinks that's a great idea. This is a horrible idea in any way or form, and I don't want anybody having my private information, it's none of their business, and I don't care if I'm just walking up and down my street, I don't want you to track how many times I walk up and down my street. And I again, say we have a disconnect. We go for reform, and we look like we're going in the right way, and then we take a turn like this, and we're doing the same thing. And if this happens, years down the road, we're going to go, uh-oh, that was something wrong. This is not in keeping with what we said we want to do, which is reform, we want to do something different, we want to do cure violence, we want to do community policing, and then we want to have Big Brother up in the sky. They do not go along together, and I implore you not to pass this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President. And I, uh, implore you not to, uh, pass this, uh, resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, all the women. Uh, all the women from the thirteenth.
Uh, yes, uh, President, members of the board. I said, I feel that supporting this resolution in no way means you support the overall issue that's coming up. Uh, I feel like I want to support this resolution because I want to know all the facts. In writing, I've heard what everyone said, but I have, I want to see it. And I think one way we can see all these facts is by exploring them through this resolution. And also I support Bill, Board Bill ninety five, the same reason. I want to know all the facts before a decision is made on any of these things. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Uh, other one from twenty eighth, your hand was up. Other one from twenty eighth? Yeah. Uh, any further discussion, any further discussion? All the men from the twenty first or the third? Any further discussion, any further discussion? All the men from the sixteenth, you recognize the close on resolution twenty four as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I do want to just clear up a few things. I, I, I will be succinct here because I, I know we've, we've had a, a robust discussion, but, um, what better, what better segue than what the alderwoman from the thirteenth just left, uh, in her statement that a handful of questions have been asked today? And, um, by supporting this resolution, you'll get the answers to some of those questions. Uh, this is, this is more of an inquiry resolution, an exploration resolve that we're stating here today to get to the answers of some of those questions. Now, maybe you don't want the answer to some of those questions because the cause is greater. Uh, and, and it's, uh, supports a political base. I don't know. But this is, this is a resolution that takes a step forward to opening up a complete inquiry of information. And maybe there's pitfalls and maybe this is snake oil, but for Pete's sakes, uh, uh, the victimization of our community, uh, we owe it to those folks to ask those more pointed questions directly of the vendor, the technology provider. And, and, uh, the, the St. Louis Police Department, the mayor's office, the director of public safety, those folks, along with, uh, the, the stakeholders that would be empowered through Board Bill ninety five, which, which I plan to support. Um, so I, I think that was an excellent point that the alderwoman from the thirteenth made, and I want to thank her for that, that that, that the support of this resolution really is just the beginning of a conversation. And the beginning to getting to answers to a handful of questions that, that were asked today. I do want to address a few things that were brought up, uh, maybe specifically about, uh, where, where the law is on this. Uh, there is settled law on this. There is a U.S. District Court that, that ruled that the First and Fourth Amendments are in no way trampled by uh, warrantless surveillance. Uh, I think one of my colleagues brought up something about thermal imagery, kilo case um, and imaging at night. Uh, that's not true, but I certainly understand that if, if I represented uh, the marijuana industry and I represented, um, and or was an owner of the marijuana industry, I would be very, very cautious and, and, and careful of anything treading on thermal imagery, which is used to decide if folks are grow, growing, harvesting marijuana. That's not the case. This wouldn't have that technology. Um, the cost was also brought up. If the city owns the data here, um, it's all sunshineable. And, you know, uh, while we're speaking of costs, crime costs St. Louis two point four billion dollars a year as it stands today. Now that's a, that's a, you know, a multiplier effect calculus, but two point four billion dollars a year is spent on crime now. If this is a technology that can potentially reduce crime, we reduce crime and reduce the cost of crime. Absolutely. Uh, also I heard from a couple of colleagues that, these are, these are actual quotes. Cameras don't stop crime, cameras don't solve crimes, cameras don't work in saving crime. Um, so I'm going to share an image real quick with folks and, and that this program has no success rate. Um, so this is a, an image that's being shared right now that is um, a murder that took place in Baltimore. Uh, you can see where the circle is over to the right hand of the screen. Is everyone seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, individual, uh, came in, murdered two people at this intersection. Drove over, as you can see, the line, all the way over to their stopping point where some bodies were. This, that, this, this data, this information was captured within hours, within hours. The, the suspects and perpetrator of that murder, that double murder, was arrested at this residence along where they found a crime ring of evidence, um, when they knocked on the door and wanted to ask questions. So to say that it doesn't work is, is, uh, being, being very casual with the truth. This is, this is, uh, actually something that, that did work. Also, we talked about cameras not working in general. Uh, I, I mentioned this technology has the opportunity to, to enhance the already existing infrastructure we have with our cameras. Uh, a year ago today, um, I received information and requested information from the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, the Real Time Crime Center. We know that the cameras that are in place today, at that point in time, have solved over thirteen, have led to over thirteen hundred arrests. They have returned seven hundred and sixty seven stolen vehicles to property owners. That's justice for victims. Uh, they have recovered over a hundred and eighty firearms. More importantly, they solve two violent crimes a day, the cameras that we have in, in place right now. And there have been over thirty six hundred charges filed as a result of cameras. So to say cameras don't work, I would then offer those folks who have a plethora of cameras in their neighborhoods and environment to sponsor a resolution donating those cameras to maybe the twenty sixth ward or the fifth ward if, if cameras don't solve crime. I'm sure the twenty second ward will take those cameras as well. Um, also I think there was something mentioned about we should be very leery because this is military technology and this came from the military. And, uh, you know, we're going to have Iraq combatant type of a, a militaristic outlook on us. That's a disingenuous statement. For Pete's sakes, we're all, we're all virtually at a meeting right now because of a DOD enhanced experience, which was the Intranet, which led to the internet. So just because the military came up with a technology doesn't mean there's virtue in it down the road. Tons of things have been discovered, um, without their original intent that have led to great public policy or advancement in our society. Penicillin, the internet, Rogaine for Pete's sakes. I mean, if we all can't get on board with Rogaine, right? I mean, come on. You know, I also would say, you know, uh, quality of life issues were brought up about this as a potential issue that, uh, a leaf blower sound is a, is an impediment to the quality of life. Well, so are homicides and so are violent crimes. So, I mean, i- if in fact a plane flies too low, uh, and it causes a, the, the ambient noise of a leaf blower, um, you know, I, I would argue that's better knowing that violent crimes potentially are going to be getting solved day over day. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I just want to continue this great dialogue and, and see if this is a potential, uh, for the city. That's all this resolution does today. I appreciate the spirit of conversations that took place today and I like everyone's views on it. And, um, I don't, I don't mean that in a, in a, in sincere way. So, uh, Mr. President, with that, uh, I will renew my motion.
Move by the alderman from the sixteenth, second by the alderwoman from the fourteenth and the twenty seventh that we, um, approve resolution twenty four as amended. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call.
Alderman Tyus?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ngrasia?
No.
Alderman Carter? Alderman Rice?
No.
Alderman Gunther?
No.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
No.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
No.
Alderman Odenberg?
Pass.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
No.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
No.
Alderman Muhammad? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaquaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Cole?
No.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
No.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Carter? Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Muhammad? Fifteen I votes and eleven no votes.
I vote, stay in the motion of the alderman from the sixteenth and perfected, oh, resolution.
The President.
Excuse me. And adopted resolution twenty four as amended. Um, I heard someone, uh, alderman from the twenty first.
I, I'm sorry for the interruption, Mr. President. I got kicked off the Zoom. I would like my vote recorded as a yes, as a I.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Sixteen I votes and eleven no votes.
I vote, stay in the motion, alderman from the sixteenth and adopted resolution twenty four as amended.
That is the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Miss Lane, it's an unfinished business.
We have none.
Analysis.
Friday, July tenth, rules will have a meet immediately after the full board meeting. Monday, July thirteenth, the following meetings will be held via webinar. Streets, traffic and refuse, nine AM, legislation, eleven AM, public safety, one PM, health and human services at three PM. Tuesday, July fourteenth, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? All the ones from the twenty eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make all of my, um, colleagues and viewers aware that on Thursday, July sixteenth, the Forest Park Advisory Board will be meeting virtually. And the advisory board is a citizens board that advises the director of parks, um, on issues specifically regarding, um, Forest Park as it relates to the master plan and, and other issues. And on the agenda will be, um, basketball facilities in, in the park. So this is a, a conversation, uh, the first time that this is appearing, I think, on their agenda. Um, that I, since I've been in office anyway. And so that will be Thursday, July sixteenth at four thirty. Um, on Monday, the Zoom information will be posted online, um, for anyone who would like to participate in that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, members of the board. May I recommend, make a recommendation since the clerk has read the announcement that we're meeting on Tuesday, July fourteenth, which is not a regularly scheduled meeting, that we have a special motion?
There, uh, Alderman, Alderman, there, the, what, what makes the motion special is that it's different than the normal Friday day. They, please stop misinterpreting the rule.
It's not a misinterpretation of the rules. It's a motion to adjourn and there's a separate rule that calls for a special motion.
Alderman, when the, when the, um, when the, um, majority floor leader makes his motion, you will have an opportunity to vote for it or against it.
Okay, well then I'm in advance calling for a roll call vote of that motion instead of a voice vote.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Again, everyone, this is announcements. So if you have an announcement, make it. All the ones from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, announced that we are having a Health and Human Services Committee hearing on Monday at three PM.
Any further announcements, any further announcement?
Actually, I do.
Alderman from the twenty third.
So we're going to hear both things in the, uh, public safety meeting, Board Bill, man, in fact. Uh, I do want, uh, I've had, some of the aldermen asked me to have, have the chief of police come in and speak to us. And, uh, although we did ask, he cannot make Monday. We will have another meeting even though we're, we're, we're still in session. We're not out of session. We're just on summer break. But we will have another meeting somewhere in there because, uh, I, I think that we really need to talk about, talk to the chief about police presence in neighborhoods. Uh, I saw last night, I don't know, I guess the whole, the, the whole department down here while they were disassembling the, uh, people out in front of City Hall. And I guess curious questions are, are how, how many people are in each district, you know, officers, how they deploy these officers? Um, so I do want everybody to know that's called me and asked me. I am trying to put that together and certainly even though we'll be on summer break, we're not out of session, but just some, on summer break, that I do plan to set something up where the chief will come in and answer questions for us. But otherwise I'll see everybody on, uh, Monday's meeting.
Thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcement, any further announcement? Alderman from the twenty second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, all members were present.
All right, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn until Tuesday, July fourteenth at ten AM.
Move by the alderman from the twenty second, second about all of them from tenth, there's been a request roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Evans? Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ngrasia?
No.
Alderman Carter? Alderman Rice?
No.
Alderman Gunther?
No.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
No.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy? Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
No.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
No.
Alderman Muhammad?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaquaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Pass.
Alderman Cole?
No.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
No.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans? Alderman Carter? Alderman Murphy?
Evans was aye.
Okay. Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Seventeen aye votes and nine no votes.
My vote is staying the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second, uh we stand adjourned and thanks to everyone who voted to allow us a meeting next week. So that we can actually finally get the close to workhouse bill done, thanks to all of you who voted aye. Have a great weekend, we stand adjourned.